Okay, everyone, it's six o'clock. Thank you, everyone. Everyone's having a good time. It's nice to see so many people here tonight. Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to offer my condolences to the family and friends and colleagues of Ellen Fruet, who passed away suddenly a few days ago. She was the executive director of Search for Sagehaven Society. Ellen was a powerhouse in our community. He was very passionate about making the lives better for all of us. The last time I saw her was at the Walk on the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation, and I was able to give her a hug and tell her how much I loved her. And I take away from that that you never know when the last time is you're going to see someone, so let's make it a good time when we see someone, and tell them how much we love them and appreciate them. So I was wondering if you could do a moment of silence for Ellen and remember all the good work that she did in our community. Thank you. Godspeed, Ellen. You will be missed. Thank you, everyone, for doing that. I'd like to call the October 20th Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. First, I'd like to acknowledge and recognize that we work, live, and play in the city of Port Alberni, which is situated on the unceded territories of the Shott and Hoopitcheset First Nations. We have an agenda in front of us. Is there any late items from the committee members? Seeing none, is there any late items from the corporate officer?
No late items, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Counselor Meade, seconded by Counselor Solder, all in favor. Any opposed motion carried. And just to notice that this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on YouTube. We have minutes in front of us from the September 15, 2025 meeting. Is any errors or additions? Moved by Counselor Solder, seconded by Second Counselor Dame, all in favor. Any opposed motion carried. Next on the agenda is public input period. This is an opportunity for the public to address the committee. A maximum of six speakers for more than five minutes each will be accommodated. For those participating electronically, please use the raise your hand feature, and you would be called upon to speak in the order of which it appears. We have a lot of people here, so I'm assuming there'll be a few speakers tonight. Who would like to go first? Please come on up. Yeah, come on up.
That button. Hey, me and technology.
Can you please just state your name?
Okay, so folks, my name's Keith. My name's Keith Ambrose. I live at 3147 on Second Avenue. And I noticed there's a lot of people here tonight, and you're right, they want to speak, but I wanted an opportunity. I was a little concerned about this. The computer beat me to my hand up there, but I don't know, I got there first. So I've noticed an improvement in some respects in my neighborhood in the response that the Salvation Army and their other partners have engaged in. It's not complete. It's working a little bit, but it's not complete. Now, I found out late in the game that we had an agreement with the Salvation Army, the city did, and with B.C. Housing as well. And I got a copy of that agreement. I was really disappointed to hear that I was lucky to get a copy, that it was protected by the Freedom of Information Act, and I wasn't happy to hear that because I was told the next time I asked for one, that's how it'll be. So that's from staff. The CAO had a different, a little different version of that, and not quite that final. It's concerning to me. So had that agreement been known, I'm a neighbor, it's a good neighbor agreement, and when it occurred, I watched how it happened. It was very subversive. The mayor's husband or ex-husband at the time, Colin Minions, talked to some people, but not to the neighbors. Okay, so I spoke to the brew pub people across the street. They knew about this agreement. I questioned them on why they didn't utilize it to save our neighborhood. I didn't really get a good response. I certainly could have used this agreement on every single day. So when I went to the soup kitchen, because their back porch, at the time it was unfenced jarred, their back porch was a gathering area, and I was complaining about the activities back there, and I was told in non-certain terms that whatever goes on outside the building walls, including on their property, was none of their concern. Okay, then I came to the city about that, and I talked to Scott Smith, and I wanted a meeting with the CAO, and I wanted a meeting with the Salvation Army, and I was angry. I was adamant I was going to go forward. I threatened a court action if I didn't get a look at that agreement. I knew nothing was being followed. I knew I'm the neighbor, me and Rick and the H&R Block, and then there's the people in the Harborview Apartments, and I want to speak about them for a minute. They've been blamed for a lot of things. Those people are in a living condition I wouldn't want for myself, but that's their living condition, and they have their own issues. And there's been a lot of people, including council members, who have tried to deflect and say, and including the Salvation Army themselves, and say it's the Harborview Apartments, but no, it's not. The Harborview Apartments provide a certain ambiance to that neighborhood, for sure. We need to deal with it, but that's a separate issue. The problem has been, it's been cleaned up. It's not the Harborview Apartments. There's noticeable difference on the ground, and it's not the Harborview Apartments. And a lot of the people who visit the Harborview for their drug supply are patrons of the shelter and the soup kitchen. So give me a warning when I'm down to a minute here, please. I'm there? Okay, so, oh, two minutes, sorry. So what I'm asking, I know, I believe, rather, I'm going to rephrase that. I believe that your, that council's going to approve another three-year temporary permit. I believe that the soup kitchen will remain indefinitely. I believe that the shelter will not be, problem will not be alleviated by the B.C. Housing build up the street on Second Avenue, which has been in the plan for a lot of years. It'll obviously, in my view, get a lot worse. However, it is fixable, folks. Had you, the city, or anybody, or had I had the ability to use that agreement, this problem wouldn't have developed to the state it's in now. My neighborhood wouldn't have been destroyed. The businesses wouldn't have been in the sad shape that they're in. You're going to come up with a new agreement, and trust me, I'm going to hold your feet to the fire on that one, but you people have done the damage. And when I say you people, I mean the council of the day who approved this have done the damage in that neighborhood. I'll say it again. My partner will not come back to Port Alberni. She's very reluctant. Okay, she's had enough. I came back the other day because I have a real estate showing. I thought, maybe I'll try to clean up the neighborhood in advance of that, and I worked for a few hours. I watched people eat their lunch from the soup kitchen. They're eating it down on the brick, left a disaster, but I cleaned up enough around my place. I was satisfied. So my viewing went okay. They weren't really interested, but the viewing went ahead. And then the next day I showed up, and there's a half-dead body on the ground beside my place, right? And I just, I got them back conscious. I got them on their feet, and I asked them to just remove themselves and their belongings. And those belongings, I want to talk about that for just a second. Those belongings were left behind. Today, I witnessed those belongings traveling as garbage does in the neighborhood when you're mentally ill. Those belongings were in the, our H&R block. When I went to go for a visit today, I had turned around and I walked right back out, and they were being distributed across their floor, those same belongings. And that's what happens to the garbage. And then, I just want to say this. A good neighbor, I'm a good neighbor. Am I out of time?
Yeah, do you want to wind up, please, Keith?
Sorry, yes, I'm just going to say that. I'm a good neighbor. I do what I can as a neighbor, but the Salvation Army has not been a good neighbor to you guys, and they can do a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come to the podium and speak? Yeah, come on up. Yeah. Hi, can you just please state your name, and you have five minutes.
For anybody that doesn't know me, my name is Lisa George. I'm a former staff of the Salvation Army. I would like to share a little something I wrote today. So in response to Mr. Petola's statement on the October 1st, 2025 council meeting stating that nothing's been done, achieved, or addressed as per the temporary use permit, I beg to differ. So thank you for allowing me to speak. I was the original applicant in the temporary use permit alongside Mr. Colin Minions. This allowed the Bread of Life Center and the Salvation Army to continue operating a vital service in this community. That housed 25 people temporarily under shelter reserves. It also gave us 20 beds under EWR, which is Emergency Weather Response. When it is cold, our vulnerable people and unhoused population need somewhere to stay. This was a three-year measure, not because housing was our responsibility, but because it was a clear and urgent gap in services for the most vulnerable. The understanding was that the duration of time we were given, housing-focused agencies and systems would step up with longer-term solutions. Unfortunately, this hasn't happened. No viable alternatives have been proposed, and now, despite the lack of any better options, and the renewal of the TUP is in question. Over the same time period, we've seen several buildings, such as the Port Pub, the Kingsway, River Road, Winter Green, and I could go on and on, be shut down, destroyed, or deemed uninhabitable. This has led to repeated displacement of individuals with nowhere else to go. The Bread of Life has remained one of the few and only stable, consistent supports through this ongoing crisis. We've also, or they have also, housed many of people with no other aid. While I no longer work for the Salvation Army nor the Bread of Life, I remain deeply committed to their work because I still feel the need exists and their support continues to be critical. I also, in my own world now, today, am a current business owner. I have two businesses uptown and am a resident uptown with a property I own. I can say with confidence, the presence of the Bread of Life Center is no negative impact to any of my businesses nor my home, and the concerns often raised about safety or disruption are not reflective of the reality of many of the people within this area. There is no better location, and there is no other organization currently positioned to meet the needs of these friends that we serve. Other neighborhoods would not be better suited, and moving the issue elsewhere without a real solution only displaces the problem still at hand. Salvation Army, Bread of Life, and myself, in my term there, took great pride in the Good Neighbor Agreement. The organization responded regularly and respectfully and promptly to any bylaw concerns, made ongoing efforts to maintain positive relationships with neighboring businesses and residents. I cannot fall solely on the Bread of Life and the Salvation Army, or it cannot be fallen solely on the Bread of Life and Salvation Army, to carry this burden, but removing them without a better plan is not a solution. It's actually a step backwards. If the temporary use permit is not renewed, what is the alternative? I ask you all that. When they are removed or asked to leave, our lowest barrier friends within our community that have a clean and supervised shelter offered to them will be given a tent, a sleeping bag, maybe a Narcan kit, possibly a big hug, and a good luck out there to them. Is that truly the outcome we're prepared to accept? Any real strategy for a safer, more inclusive community must begin with supporting and including services that are already working right now on the ground, the people doing that, providing what they need, giving these friends an option. It starts with renewing the temporary use permit and recognizing the essential role both the Salvation Army and the Bread of Life play within our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Just right on time. Thank you. And I believe that lady in the second row, did you want to come up? Oh, okay. Counselor Petola?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. George, for your comments. I would just like to point out that you started with a misquote because I didn't say ever that the Salvation Army or the Bread of Life has done nothing. I said, "There has been nothing done in finding the permanent solution instead of operating under a temporary use permit," which is exactly what you said. So I'm glad to hear that we agree. No viable alternatives have been proposed, and no one stepped forward, which is really a shame, and hopefully, we will find a permanent solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come and speak? Mr. Ramsey, please come on up. We all know you, but just state your name for the record, please.
Major Michael Ramsey, Salvation Army. Ellen Fruet was hoping to attend this meeting. Much of what I'm saying is from my conversation with her. She said to me before her passing a few days ago, "Michael, quite frankly, this is not right." What she was referring to was when the city was directed to collaborate with the Salvation Army and other service providers to develop a neighborhood mitigation plan that the only other agency invited to discussion was CMHA, whose board chair sits on council. The Salvation Army requested that other interested parties in the uptown be invited, Inyo, Sagehaven, Friendship Center, et cetera, and Ellen Fruet specifically asked to participate, and the city declined to request. It's proposed that the city spend $142,000 to pay for CMHA's clean team. CMH Clean Team has always done a great job, and CMHA, under Katrina's direction, does a great job. Salvation Army currently patrols the neighborhood each hour, tidying up the area at their own expense. The Community Action Team is also willing to provide this service. Further, there are multiple purveyors of intoxicants in the uptown, some legal, some not. The Bread of Life provides a place free of legal and illegal intoxicants. The Bread of Life Center provides for between 25 and 45 people to be off the streets each night. The Bread of Life Center also provides washrooms and other supports. These services all need to be a part of any mitigation plan. Also, we need to know whether the services provided by the Salvation Army at the Bread of Life are going to continue before we can decide on this plan as presented. From my point of view, the whole discussion seems to be putting the cart before the horse. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else like to come up at the podium and speak? Please come on up. And please just state your name for the record, please.
My name is Nathan Tsai. I want, so just to give you some background, fifth son of Jack and Grace Tsai, grew up here, was born and raised, have the pleasure of working with the city of Port Alberni in some of my web agency application initiatives, but I come here today just as a community member, someone who has a big heart for the most vulnerable, especially for those wrestling with homelessness or addiction, et cetera. I'd love to start with a question to you all. Who here perhaps has ever had a friend who needed emergency housing and needed a place for them to stay? Any hands? Lots and lots of people. And so I had that pleasure, not necessarily pleasure, I was, found myself in that. I was coming home on the Island Link bus, and there was this one lady who was dropped off in the rain, and she didn't have off in the rain, and she didn't have a place to go, or she didn't seem like she had a ride coming. So I was about to leave, but I felt worried about it. I was like, maybe I should ask her if anyone's coming to pick her up, and she didn't. Over dinner, I figured out that she had been here 30 years ago, but she currently did not, lost contact with her family here, reached out to some of her family. It was, they were not, she had a specific mental health condition that did not allow them to come welcome her back with open arms, unfortunately. And so after some discussion, I brought her to the Bread of Life. And the next day, two things happened. The first was she said, she introduced me to the people she met at the Bread of Life as the young guy who saved her. There's more details into that. If anything, I was the least person who did anything. I just brought her there. It was the staff of the Bread of Life, some here represented, who, whose labor and love provided her with a safe and secure place. That's just one story. It also turned out like she was the mother of a business owner here in town who reached out to me the next day and thanked me for serving her mother in that way. The other story has to do with the community Easter dinner that I had the privilege of helping host earlier in April. And the idea there was to be able to bring together people who owned businesses, and people who went to shelters, and high school students and seniors, and First Nation chiefs and their people, and bring them all into one room to be able to eat dinner on an equal level, as neighbors, as friends. And through that process, I wanted to go in person and invite people to this dinner. Can I get a check on my time?
Two and a half minutes.
Thank you so much. And so, and so I went, and so I was often going to the Bread of Life at that point. I continued to do so. But then this time, I was also going to the PA Friendship Shelter and going in person to invite people, giving these little slips, learning people's names, and also went one time to the Maitland Shelter. And, and just from my own experience inviting people, hosting this dinner, I think that there's something very special about the Bread of Life, and that is that it's, 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 first off, it's a community. We have people who regularly attend there, go there, and they're interested in each other's lives. They do crafts together, they do art together. It's in this space that I learned some of the people wrestling with homeless, like they're auto mechanics, and they help each other move, they hire each other to help each other move as they perhaps go from one housing to another. I learned their love for art. Some, there's one particular person who I think places a very heavy toll on the emergency services, who, whose buddy told me one night, he was like, "Hey, this guy's actually a great artist." And so I'm just learning all these things as I just journey along my new friends. And I think perhaps one special thing about the Bread of Life is that it's a hub, not just a community, a place to be able to socialize and to break this loneliness of our individualistic society today, but it's also an opportunity to begin to dream of what we can do together as a community to help people get to the next step. I think as Ms. Lisa George mentioned, there's not many alternatives if someone wants to look for a clean space. I think perhaps the last thing I wanted to leave with is one of the people I had the privilege of working with in the community Easter dinner, she works with the PA Friendship Center as a volunteer, she told me how far she went to escape an environment that what we're having drugs was normal. And she left family. It was a lot. And I think as I talk to other people at the Bread of Life, to the extent that they would go to leave, to find a clean environment, I think is actually the streets. And so if we remove the only clean shelter, as far as I know, from the Bread of, from our community, we're leaving those dedicated change to the streets. And so, as my side, thanks for listening.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come and speak? Come on up, Graham.
Is that okay? Can you hear me okay? Perfect. I have a couple of things that I just wanted to speak on. After listening to everyone speak, I guess I'm going to touch on a couple of issues. The first and foremost is that I know with the Salvation Army, we often talk about homelessness or drug addiction or those types of people. I would like to remind everyone that primarily these people have disability issues. They have a primary underlying diagnoses typically, or undiagnosed issue that leads to addictions. So when it comes down to who's dealing with populations on Third Avenue and the Salvation Army are doing an exceptional job, given they are not a disability service organization to meet the needs of a diverse population that all come from different places. And it is a struggle 100% to actually know each person and where they come from or what their experience is. But the Salvation Army has done an exceptional job in learning and knowing who those people are and building trust. And at the same time, as our current shelter up on 8th Avenue, when that is full, there are people who live there, and it's not a temporary shelter for them, that is their home. And so we are, in the same way that we had to get rid of Port Pub and lose those housing spaces, losing the Bread of Life Shelter will be losing housing. It's not just losing a shelter, there are people who rely on that as their fixed housing. And I do understand the desire for business owners to get people out of that area, I do. And I think that the issues that pertain to homelessness or that are caused by homelessness, such as garbage, or people leaving blankets or clothing, or things that are now being proposed through, you know, we need a cleanup team to deal with this, those aren't going to go away without us actually investing in mental health services. We have had, I think, whatever the number is, 130 people who are unhoused that have died in this opioid crisis already. We now have 160 homeless people on our streets. There is a constant supply coming from the middle class who cannot access services, who are ending up homeless. It's not one population that's been a problem population for years and years. These are young people, these are elderly people, these are people who had addiction issues to alcohol that had nothing else to do, and it was cheaper to start smoking heroin. It's a complex issue that needs to be addressed. But today, we have on the proposal to be spending $140,000 to develop a garbage pickup crew, as opposed to having addictions counselors being funded in our community, or trauma counselors, or grief counselors, or men's mental health counselors, or anything that is really going to make a measurable impact and stop us from having a constant supply of people ending up on the streets. We are not going to address homelessness by only focusing on homeless people. We have to stop what is leading to homelessness, and that is the mental health crisis in our community. I will remind you that in our local area health report, 38% of our population, 38.8%, so almost 40% of the population rank themselves as having poor mental health. That's a leading contributing factor to homelessness. Most of us are at risk, you know, in the middle class or the lower classes at this point, we're one paycheck away from homelessness, and we're talking about removing shelters and funding projects that don't necessarily align with the immediate needs of our community. And I would actually say, invest in mental health, invest in them, but invest in developing actual meaningful mental health programs that will help people not end up on the streets or help people get off the streets in a meaningful way that isn't just part-time employment. That's, that's my blurb. Thank you.
Just to remind everyone, please no clapping or booing. I forgot to mention that the last time. Thank you. We have room for one more speaker. Would anyone else like to come up? Come on up, please, sir. And just please state your name for the record, please.
Mark Hunter. And I wanted to say thank you for allowing this to happen. And from the previous conversations, you've got a lot to work on, and it's going to be tough. So, on a different subject, with your city webpage, environmental protection. Council has made it clear that the environment is top priority. So, so, some say perpetual power is not possible. I looked up online, and it said if perpetual, if perpetual power was possible, and the link said that the theory of the law, and the second law, and the word there is theory. Also, we all get junk mail in our emails, in popular mechanic sense, and they say the first law of the thermodynamics has been rewritten, whatever that means. So, someone introduced me to AI, which, artificial intelligence, and I thought, "I'll try it out. Five plus six equals 15." It comes back, sorry, five plus six is 11. So I put together some numbers, and I got a thesis to, and put that in, and it came back, "Oh, okay." So again, this environmental protection, council has made it clear that the environment is a top priority. So, not just to take my opinion, you guys, I think there's three engineers that work here. What I would like to ask if, for you to make, be part of this, if you could get your engineers to verify, I can send the information to them later, because it would be nice to be having clean energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else had their hand raised. Would council be okay if you took another speaker? I see heads shaking, so come on up. Person at the back here had their hand raised? Yeah, come on up. I wasn't sure if it was you or not, Jerry, just saw a hand from the back. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
And thank you, Deb and councilors, for allowing that. I just want to back up to the Salvation Army issue, and I don't think that not renewing the temporary use permit is the answer to uptown challenges. There's many, many, many challenges in the uptown area. I live here, I work here, both right on 2nd Avenue and Argyle. And I see it all the time. And taking away that temporary use permit is not going to fix anything. We need to work together to collaborate, to come up with some other ideas. I know that we have been struggling, and we keep saying that we're struggling, and we keep saying that there's these issues, but nothing is concrete yet. And we need to collaborate, we need to figure it out, because it is just getting worse. And I don't think the Salvation Army is the problem, or the temporary shelter. And on the, the Clean Team, I'm curious about how was it decided that CMHA was going to get that money to fund that project? What about other nonprofits in the area? What about Salvation Army that's already doing part of that? Why don't they get that, some of that money? How was that decided? And is there a better way that we could do it? That's it.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, everyone. I appreciate everyone's comments. So now we're going to delegations. We have Deb Hamilton here, the executive director from ADAP. She's going to be to give us an update on the Foundry Youth Health Center. Welcome, Deb. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and councilors. Thank you very much for having me. And I do want to recognize and thank everyone in chambers tonight that have spoken during public input, and also thank the service providers in the Uptown Corps, Salvation Army, CMHA, Friendship Center, Sage Haven, for the work that they do. And as a, as the executive director of ADAP's Youth and Family Services, tonight, I talk about something a little more exciting, and I talk about something a little more upstream, and something that is preventative, that is indicative. But I am not, as a resident, I am not unaware of the impacts that we are facing here in the Uptown Corps. So, lastly, before I begin, I'd like to thank Madam Chair for her, attending to my own grief, for her comments about Ellen Fruet. And I believe that on a night like tonight, with the voices that we've just heard, she is absolutely with us. So I'm very pleased to be with you tonight and provide you with an update on Foundry Port Alberni for Madam Chair and council, and for those with us tonight, and for those watching at home on YouTube, which I have to remind myself to stand up straight. I will do a brief review of what Foundry, the Foundry Youth Service Model is, and how it came to be in Port Alberni. Would the corporate officer please? Thank you. So, Foundry Network, you will see under the blue and the green sidebars, the numbers of communities that have already developed a Foundry in their community or are in development. We are one of the 10 Phase 5 communities. Foundry has a strategic vision of 50, 50 Foundry Centers in our province, and currently 35 are operating or under development. Next slide, please. So the Foundry model is Integrated Youth Services. So an Integrated Youth Service Model means that service providers and systems work together so that youth do not have to piece together the help that they need, and also the fund that they need, that they can get it all in one place. Most importantly, the Integrated Youth Service Model means that services delivered in this community are informed by the youth living here. Foundry is certainly part of a pan-Canadian network of Integrated Youth Service Models and a global network of youth service models. Next slide, please. I wanted to share Foundry's vision and mission. Its mission resonates with me, and I want everyone in the room and at home tonight to hear it, that its mission is to support youth to live a good life. And that echoes sentiments that I've heard from councilors in the past, both this council and its previous council, and from damn near anyone I speak with. Next slide. Keep going. Keep going. I only have 10 minutes. All right. So we have a hub-and-spoke model. The Foundry model invests in a community to provide integrated health services, providing primary care, doctors or nurse practitioners, work and employment supports, either through a Foundry-specific work and education program, or by partnering with employment services in the community, peer and family supports, Foundry is very family-centric, housing and other social supports, Indigenous programming, where informed by and invited by local nations, mental health care and substance use services. Next slide, please. Youth are invited to participate at their local Foundry in whichever way they see fit. When we have the lowest and most desired services, like drop-in center or life skills, we see a lot of youth enter a Foundry for the first time. And then we see youth finding their own paths inside of a Foundry Center to healthcare, to substance use care, to mental health care. We actually have an interested outreach dietitian already on board for Foundry Port Alberni, some excited things. Next slide. Family Inclusive Services. Next slide. Okay, next slide. Nobody wants to know about the development timeline. It's a beast. Here's the role of ADAP. So the role of ADAP was to very boldly present the picture and the needs and the desired, desire for partnership in the Alberni Valley. We did it easily. There was 26 letters of support from service providers and system partners to host a Foundry in our community. The host agency, in this case, ADAP, is responsible for capital project development, fundraising, partnership development, youth and family engagement, communication, center operations, et cetera. And today, we, I've come here to give you an update on the capital project development and look at future partnership development. Next slide, please. Here are some very exciting pictures. ADAP's purchased the Boys Project Building. A lot of folks to thank for that. We had some support from Citi, support of Hupetcha Set and Sashot to be the identified next right fit to steward this building. We purchased it with part of the capital investment of Foundry. And next slide. Oh, boom. Yeah. That's fine. Yeah, you're killing me. What does he want? All right. There is a role of this building. This building has a job to do, and its job, according to the hundreds of youth that And its job, according to the hundreds of youth that we have spoken to and that have informed this design, its job is to ensure that youth never feel awkward when they're inside of it. That's what it all boils down to. To provide what Foundry Framework deems necessary, what the youth in Port Alberni have said they want, and to not feel awkward. And if we can advance the slide. We see in light blue, we see clinical exam rooms. In dark blue, we see family meeting rooms, counseling rooms, talking rooms. In dark blue at the back of the building, closer to the khaki, we see an Indigenous ceremony room. Every space that you see in orange in the top area of the building has been designed by youth and the architect to represent areas that youth can sit and wait. They do not have to wait in front of a receptionist with other youth that may or may not make them feel awkward. Those spaces are supported and they're available. In the back, we have the group meeting spaces with a large community kitchen. Those two large group rooms have been put into this design because we have heard from youth over three years and two significant engagement projects, which have been reported back to you by Marcy DeWitt of the ACHN and myself from ADAP. Youth have asked for a drop-in center. A drop-in center is not part of the Foundry model, but we see it in many, many communities. The second floor of the back half of the Foundry Center is staff, a staff floor. It is open concept. No adult gets an office at Foundry. They get a hot desk. This is about maximizing space for youth in our community. Advance the slide, please. All right, AI depictions of early engagement. And when I say engagement, I mean rich engagement about how do you want your Foundry to feel? What do you want to see inside of it? How do you want it to look? What resonates? What doesn't? How do you not want to feel? The questions have been endless, the opportunities to discuss have been endless. We have found our way into every corner of this valley to talk to youth and their families. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay, so this looks massive. It's about 6,500 square feet. The original building is just over 3,000 square feet. And to identify all of the necessary rooms for a Foundry for a community of our size and to add the requests of youth in our community, this is what we've got, 6,500 square feet. Next slide. This is the front of what we are lovingly calling the bunker on Anderson. We know it is Boys Project or maybe Calgary Kindergarten School. And we will be giving a full gut job and renovation to the existing building because it does hold a legacy of being a place for youth to gather. Next slide. Look at that. So the backside of Foundry has a lot of glass in it, as does the front. Natural light floods it, not just from the mezzanine, but all along where the roof meets the building line. And one more. And this is how Mayor and council can help. I will preface this to say that I do not have a specific dollar ask of you all tonight, that I am asking for a commitment in principle to meet with ADAP's again. We're happy to come and do another delegation when costing and validation has been completed on this schematic design and when our functional program, which is what we want to offer, has been costed out. But for now, spread an excitement and awareness of this project amongst city and regional district staff and networks. We have a hard time building a profile of ADAP's in the community. I'm not sure that places like CMHA or Salvation Army have those issues because they have such a recognizable brand. But ADAP's had its 20th anniversary in this community this year. Foundry is a sizzling topic of celebration across this province. Help us to develop that passion in this community as well. As we endeavor, capital is spelt wrong. That's embarrassing. If I slipped the corporate officer 20 bucks, she could have fixed it for me. Support city staff with, to work with ADAP's and its capital development partners in a spirit of collaboration, partnership and expedience. We hope that when we encounter city staff, that they are as excited as we are. Reinvest recreation dollars once identified for youth. Drop-in services into an ongoing commitment to Foundry and its programming. I am talking about the Knights Alive drop-in center that was provided at Gyro. This community, we have generations of Port Albernians who remember having a youth drop-in center. The idea has not been forgotten and it has not been lost. I recall the reasons for pausing Knights Alive. And I, but I have never understood why those drop-in dollars found its way out of the budget. I do remember Mayor and council saying that maybe the city weren't the best people to provide drop-in services. And certainly there were initiatives that brought service providers together and said, let's open the doors to Gyro. And service providers said, we all have mandates. We can't just come and open the door. We have to serve in the way that our funders are asking us to. But our interest holders are the youth. They are asking for drop-in programming. Direct investment into the capital development of the Foundry Center. We do not know what the gap to goal is going to be. Initial costing came in way higher than anticipated and it will be revalidated and I will have new costing. We will then understand what the fundraising burden will be on our community. And we see similar initiatives like the emergency room at the hospital, initial capital investment and the community fundraising, the rest. Youth have asked us to provide two large group rooms for a drop-in center. And I'm asking Mayor and council to think about these things when making budget commitments and through processes. And now I'll take questions.
Thank you, Deb. I really appreciate that presentation. And I want you to know we are just as excited as you are. And I want to thank you for your tenacity and your perseverance in bringing this to Port Alberni for you. Thank you. And councillor Mealy had a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would first like to apologize, Ms. Hamilton, for stopping you in the middle of your delegation. I just like, I need to talk about this. Hold on. No, it was your time and I apologize for that. So just going back to the, it was page 24, but it was the plan of what the building would look like in the surrounding area. And I appreciate it. I came to the open house and I appreciate you having me there that day. And I appreciate you listening because I do have residents in the area who have problems with parking in general. There are businesses that are on Redford that the staff parks about a block away and on that street as well. So really appreciate the fact that the plan does have rear parking as well. So that's a big part and just, I think that's a big issue for a lot of the neighbors. So for you to do that and have a form, you know, upfront in the plan, I think goes a long way with the neighbor. So I really appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Well, thanks for recognizing that. We do have a request in with city planning around a variance to be able to park off the alley and I appreciate that support.
Any other questions from councillors?
That's it?
Do you have a question? Do you have an anticipated date when you might be open or?
Yeah, 2027. So the development timeline is not linear. It is fluid. And it does require some pixie dust in terms of making sure that we have all of the capital resources that we need. But operations will begin in 2027. Development permit or development plan will be submitted in November. We would like to break ground in the spring.
So if you needed funding for your drop-in center, you would need it for this coming year or for the following year?
That's correct.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about it this budget year, but we need to start thinking about it.
Right. Unless it was, unless it was, at least that's not my phone. Unless it was a significant generous capital contribution, and we would take that anytime. Which is a hard thing to ask for in this financial landscape. But I do want to thank corporate officer for advancing my slides for me. I appreciate it. Thank you for having me.
Councillor Sola has a question.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks for the presentation there, Deb. I'm just kind of curious, will you be making another presentation to us in the near future? And also are you applying for other grants and looking for more funding sources other than just city?
Yeah, we're working with Foundry philanthropy experts. We are engaging with philanthropy consultants and service groups at this time. There, the provincial capital gaming grants were open in July, I believe, or August. And we weighed at all of the Foundries that are in development, we're waiting with bated breath. And there are new guidelines, new restrictions. And we are exempt from being able to apply for them, as are most of the Foundries in development. So there is no provincial dollars coming. The federal mental health fund has provided Foundry Central with a $10 million investment. And we know that about quarter of a million dollars of that will come to the communities that are developing Foundries. So we'll use that in the later stages of the building development.
Another question. Have you followed up with the Minister Osborne, who represents Port Alberni?
We have. We have. We've spoken with Minister Osborne about Foundry-related business a number of times. She's very supportive.
Councillor Dean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for being here, Deb, through the chair. And what we've heard already tonight and what we will hear later on just shows how important these upstream services are. And so I'm so very, very grateful to hear that we are getting a Foundry. And thank you for bringing this excellent report to us. So great news.
Thank you so much. And councillor Sola, I will be back. You couldn't keep me away, you know?
We have a new Parks and Recreation and Culture Director coming. I think they're starting mid-November. So when they start, I'm going to suggest that the two of you connect and talk about how the services the city can maybe help support you for that drop-in center. I think this would be really important.
Thank you. That would be appreciated.
Any final questions or comments?
Councillor Petola, I thought you had a question brewing.
I get singled out. Actually, Ms. Hamilton, I just wanted to say, and I'm just repeating what Madam Chair already said, is your tenacity in seeing this project through to, well, I'm going to say to completion. Because you're on the pathway and although it might be a long path, you certainly are well and firmly footed on that path. So I just appreciate that you undertook a goal and your commitment to that goal is very admirable. And the people of Port Alberni benefit from it.
Well, thank you very much. ADAP's is the smallest host organization in the entire Foundry Network. The next smallest host organization is five times our size. So if that's not a scrappy Port Alberni fighting story, I don't know what is. And I look forward to keeping you abreast of the situation.
Great. Thank you very much, Deb. We'll keep in touch with you. Okay, next we have Marlene Morton. So if you'd like to come up, please, Marlene. She's going to talk about the tennis courts at Gyro Park and discuss options for designated pickleball courts. So if you just, is the speaker on perfect? Thank you. Please go ahead, Marlene. Yes.
Hi. Okay, madam, or I don't know, sitting madam chair. I don't know how to address you. City councillors and members of our passionate tennis community and other people. We are here tonight to ask the city to preserve the five Gyro Park tennis courts as tennis courts. Earlier this year, a member of a pickleball group approached us while we were playing tennis and mentioned that their group would like their courts resurfaced. We also agreed to this, but also wanted us to sign a petition giving them three out of the five tennis courts. Needless to say, none of us signed her petition. This pickleball player named Jennifer told us that there are more pickleball players than tennis players in town. They may have come to this conclusion, as they are seniors like some of us, and play pickleball mainly in the morning. They do not see the younger ones playing throughout the afternoons and evenings after school and work. Currently, the middle court, number three, is marked for pickleball. I don't know if there's a picture, Sarah. Do you have the pictures of the courts? Anyways, I'll try to keep going while you're finding that. Yeah. And you will see for yourself the confusion the pickleball markings can cause tennis players. So the white is the tennis court markings and the blue is the pickleball imposed on to the tennis courts. Tennis is a sport that can be played by all ages. It's a great form of exercise and also a social sport. So many people grew up playing tennis and still enjoy it. Tennis is a sport that requires regular practice, so we need courts to improve all our various shots, serves, forehands, backhands, et cetera. Tennis is still a popular sport with competitions held throughout the year. Australian Open, French Open, Wimbledon, et cetera. Some of us have played tennis for decades. And even after we can no longer play, we would like to preserve the courts for the younger generations. The courts are used both by city residents and visiting out-of-town tennis players. There are other places in town where dedicated pickleball courts could possibly be set up. EJ Dunn Elementary Court, the old Klitsa School Court, now owned by Jericho Road Church, the Somaas Lands with vast concrete areas. And I got one from David today, possible, possibly putting four new courts by the standalone court that's already set up on the field across from the Gyro Youth Center. And the old RCMP building, which now houses physiotherapists and dentists. I inquired at the last location and was told that the landlord has been contacted by a pickleball group. On the upside, we have been booking our preferred court, number five, which is the furthest from the lacrosse court through Echo Center, and this has been working out. Echo Center emails us a copy of our monthly contract and we keep this on our phones should there be a dispute, but this has not happened. The only thing is that other players do not know when the courts are available. So you see, both sports could share the courts as long as the tennis court markings remain. One of our tennis friends has moved back from the mainland and has firsthand knowledge about pickleball taking over and pushing other sports out. Many towns have spoken out against pickleball due to the loud noise level. I have a copy of the latest Valley Vibe edition. On page 39, it states, Dumont, president of the PA Picklers, says it's the volume of people picking up the sport that made them decide to approach the city of Port Alberni's council to see if an expansion is possible. They are thrilled that their proposal was accepted and they can soon start moving forward on their plans. This will mean the PA Picklers will take two of the neighboring tennis courts and convert them to permanent pickleball courts. Our question to council is, do you mean two courts in total? Including the court number three that is already marked with pickleball lines? Or two more courts for a total of three? That would leave only two tennis courts for the tennis community to play on. So does anybody have an answer to that? Is it a total of two or three?
Do you remember, Mike, what that was? I think it was just two, wasn't it?
Yeah, through the chair, there was two asked to be designated as pickleball courts. And then the court three, I believe, was going to be a shared court.
But we can't play on this. We cannot play on that.
I'm just saying that that was the proposal. I'm not arguing. I'm just stating what was in the proposal.
Okay, so I understand, my understanding is it's two courts plus the middle court, which we cannot use. So that's a total of three courts? Okay, well, I think most, all of us think that this is neither fair or right. And we ask the city to adjust their acceptance of the pickleball proposal. We did not have any say in the matter and we would like to provide future input. We did not have any say in the matter, and we would like to provide future input with regards to the courts. So in conclusion, we are still playing tennis at Gyro Park in September and October, while there is a definite absence of pickleball players who now play indoors at Glenwood and the Athletic Hall. The Gyro tennis courts are the only remaining tennis courts in town. We just want to be able to continue to use them for tennis, for others, and not feel squeezed out. So I think the bottom line is two is not sufficient for tennis players.
Thank you, Marlene. Is there any questions? Counselor Sola?
Just kind of curious to know, the third pickle court, when, the shared one, why can't you share it? I'm not a pickleballer.
We can share it, but the lines, if you see the lines, you cannot play tennis on it. It's just too confusing. It's like if you had a baseball diamond with three bases, and then there's a new sport which uses 12 bases scattered all over. You know, it would be pretty confusing for baseball. So, yeah, yeah, you've got to come and see the courts, Cynthia. It's very confusing, yeah.
I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
And to comprehend what's going on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate, appreciate the speaker, appreciate you coming to council. And I didn't think that pickleball and tennis would get my blood boiling, but it is a little bit. And the reason why is when pickleball, the pickleball people came to council, one of my main questions was, what about the people that play tennis there? And I appreciate it, because I was, I even said that at, they had a draw the other day, and I came to, came by to, they're doing a fundraising draw. And I even said during that, I'm like, thank you for considering the tennis players. And I even said that. And obviously now, and I say this with respect, and I like to hear back from the PA Picklers, is what kind of consultation was there? Because now I'm hearing that the tennis players were not consulted, were consulted, and it was a negative response in general of. So, and even too, and I feel bad, because these are the kind of things in this city where I usually, I listen to everybody, but then I go and do my own investigation. And had I known Mr. Burchasic was part of this group, I could have asked him at 7-Eleven the other day, and I would have found out on my own that there wasn't any real consultation, if that's really what's happening. And I don't want to put, I don't want to call anybody a liar here, of course. I just want to make the best decision for everybody. But it does, it does make me disappointed, because even on the Labor Day-long weekend, I went to the IHC, to the old arena, to enjoy the day. And I looked up there, and it was a beautiful day, and I said, man, there's only tennis players there. There's a lot of tennis players up there, right? There wasn't any, and so just, that was in the back of my mind, that there's still obviously usage. But whether or not you were approached as a group, or maybe one or two people, or whatever, however that consultation is, I would, I'd really like to see us make sure that that consultation happens. That was one of the first things that I said, is that there are tennis courts. We can make positive changes to the community, but let's have everybody involved in the conversation. So I appreciate you coming forward. Sorry that, if that conversation hasn't happened earlier. But I do appreciate the fact that you've come forward today to say, hey, it's not right. So, obviously, we have a bit of work to do with the PA Picklers, and to ensure that the tennis players, and that's what they are, they're tennis courts first, to ensure that everybody can play on those surfaces, whether it be two courts, three courts, one court, whatever. I'm a full believer that, and I do apologize, I do see, I do see the lines, and yeah, that's going to be a little confusing. I was an unsuccessful tryout in my high school tennis team. So I wasn't, I wasn't as good as Mr. Burchasic, per se, but nonetheless, it's, I can see it being confusing. So perhaps maybe that's a conversation we need to have the PA Picklers and have them here, or have a conversation, just say, can we just figure this out? Come together with the tennis players and do what we probably should have done in the first place. So I appreciate you coming forward today.
Thank you.
Thank you. No clapping, please. Any other questions or comments from council? Yeah, come on up. Sure, why not?
Hi. So my name is Tony Burchasic. I'm an instructor in town. So I play tennis five or six, okay, days a week. So I see what goes on there pretty much daily. And with all due respect to the pickleballers, they do have more players than us. The thing is, is they have a lacrosse box that's already full for them. They have one pickleboard, pickleball court at Gyro, and they have the one tennis court with the pickleball lines on it. So I play during the day, the afternoon, sometimes at night. My point is, I'm there pretty much all week long. And with all due respect to the people who play pickleball, how many, okay, of them there are, they have never once used the whole, full lacrosse courts. They have never used the pickleball court on the tennis court, and they've never actually used the pickleball court that they have. So they're wanting to take more of our courts, but they have, they have all never been used pretty much, okay, at the same time. So for them to even be asking to take our tennis courts when all they have is not even being used constantly, it just makes no sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Counselor Petola?
I don't play either pickleball or tennis. I also don't play badminton. I am a resolute failure at racket sports. What I am charged with here on council is to provide a reasonable use of public funds for the benefit of the population of the city. That includes pickleball, that includes tennis, that includes lots of other recreational activities. So I think that being a obligation that I am committed to, and I feel most of, all of council is committed to, that it's not a question of us against them. We all live here. We all benefit from the fact that some people will play tennis and enjoy it. I benefit from that, because I know that part of the population of this community is getting in a benefit from playing tennis. So I really don't see it as being an us-against-them situation, and I don't think it ever should be. I think it should be, as with all populations in our community, finding a way that we can all interact together and achieve and value each other's objectives and goals, one and the same. I understand that there are physical limitations on the number of courts that are available. And really, the solution would be have more courts. I don't know that that is a financially viable solution, but it certainly would be one. I say all this so that those listening from the pickleball community online and those present from the tennis community here know that, at least from my point of view, I don't value one over another. I don't wish to pit people against another. And I'm thankful that we're just talking about balls and not guns like the Hatfields and McCoys. So I hear you. I hope to find a solution that will be beneficial to all. And I can say that that solution is not just ignoring the problem. So stay tuned. Thank you for your input, and we will hopefully be making some progress on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Petola. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is the 2026 to 2030 financial plan. We'll just wait a moment, because some people are leaving. So next on the agenda is the 2026 to 2030 financial plan operational amendments. We have a report from the Director of Finance on operational amendments. Andrew, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, we do have some further amendments that we are making recommendations to the committee. And first off, we'd like to provide the recommendation on some capital transfer to reserves that we had earmarked in the financial plan. And it was intended to provide some bandwidth to do some capital planning after our master plans have been completed. Those are still in progress, but in light of the financial situation and where we're sitting right now, the recommendation from administration is to move that funding from the contribution to reserve or other projects in 2026, to remove that, and then make an asset management contribution of $500,000. So that's reducing the financial plan by $1.5 million in 2026, noting that, you know, we do need to make sure that our asset management is maintained and not to have a drastic increase in following years. To make that asset management contribution will allow us in the future to achieve some of the projects that we know are coming forward. The second item is just looking at, you know, our future water and sewer projects that are coming forward, with the focus being on taxation for this component. We wanted to make sure that the financial plan reflected the increases for capital operations tonight as our final presentation to council, or the committee, sorry, that allows us then to bring forward first reading on October 27th. That's on Monday. So with that, we are looking to possibly bring some forward capital projects or additional sewer and water items. So we just wanted to make sure council is aware of that. And also, we do look at taking this financial plan forward in a little bit earlier fashion. So with that, there's some information that we're still awaiting. So payroll taxes, WorkSafe premiums, and some contract commitments that need to be finalized. But usually, those are closer to December. So we are being conservative in the approach, and the financial plan will reflect some possible increases in those contractual commitments and payroll taxes. So with that, we are sitting at the last night for operations to bring forward the plan for the financial plan. We'll bring forward the consolidated financial plan with the recommendations at our next council meeting. That will provide the indication of where we are currently with the 2026 taxation increase. And with that, hand it to the committee if there's any questions.
Thank you, Andrew. Any questions? Counselor Petola?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the committee of the whole receive the report 2026 to 2030 financial plan operational amendments dated October 15th, 2025.
Moved by Counselor Petola, seconded by Counselor Sola. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the committee of the whole recommend council amend the draft 2026-2030 financial plan as follows. I reduce line 11111, general purposes, taxes, $1,517,361. II, reduce line 28220, projects TBD council direction, $2,017,361. III, increase line 28211, transfer to reserves, asset management reserve, $500,000.
Moved by Counselor Petola, seconded by Counselor Mealy. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Next is a service level report from the Corporate Services Department. Please go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to try to move screens and talk all at once, so we'll see how that goes. Today, I am pleased to present the Service Level Report for Legislative Services and Corporate Services, focusing on our objectives for 2026 to 2030 in alignment with council's strategic priorities. Corporate services includes several key areas, including council and legislative services, corporate services and administration, communications, and community safety and social development. Our department provides a wide range of essential and supportive functions, including council services, which is administration of meetings, report preparation, agenda and minute management, and correspondence; corporate administration, which includes oversight of staffing, agreements, bylaws, policies, records management, and legal compliance; public services, so addressing public inquiries, managing information requests, processing insurance claims, overseeing elections, and affirming oaths. Service levels are guided by legislative timelines, council priorities, and emerging needs. We strive to proactively manage agreements, contracts, policies, and bylaws as resources permit. Moving on to our financial plans, which are essential for supporting our service delivery in the upcoming years, the forecast for 2026 to 2030 outline the necessary budget allocations that will enable us to uphold and enhance our service standards. Apart from two operational financial plan amendments related to legal fees and software licensing, which will you, which you will be asked to consider following this report, the corporate services budget remains consistent with those reported in the previous five-year financial plan. It was noted today by staff that the software licensing increase request is already reflected within the 2026 to 2030 budget reflections. So should council approve the increase, there will be no additional amendments made to those numbers. And I'll just flip forward to the next budget there real quick. The expectations set by council will continue to guide our approach to service delivery. Within Legislative Services, this means supporting council's priorities to address equitable funding models for key service areas, including recreation, the library, and the RCMP. We will also continue supporting council's advocacy efforts for issues related to forestry, housing, and healthcare, all in line with council's overarching priority of community safety. In Corporate Services, our priorities for the coming years include continuing to address derelict buildings, reviewing existing agreements, updating bylaws and policies, and enhancing communication strategies. A significant focus moving into 2026 will be on preparation and planning for the October 17th general local election. We acknowledge the challenges of balancing proactive initiatives with ongoing priorities. In the coming years, we will aim to focus on two key areas, records management and council meeting management systems. Our goal is to identify solutions that improve service delivery while aligning with council's strategic objectives. Effective communication is essential for engaging with our community. We are committed to improving our strategies to ensure that information is easily accessible to all citizens, particularly through an upgrade of our website, which is currently progressing through the procurement process. We will finalize our communication plans and policies to standardize engagement practices as we move forward. An exciting initiative will involve developing communication and outreach plans as we complete our master plans and official community plan. With that, I welcome any questions or feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, Director of Corporate Services? I get that right? So the easy question is, the second motion is the software licensing by $5,000. And if I heard it correctly, we don't need to increase that as it's already reflected in the budget in 2026? I got that right? Okay, excellent. All right, that's the easy one. The, not, not-so-easy one, but it is. The legal fees to go for $25,000 to, or $25,000 to $50,000, the rationale behind that would be?
Thank you. Yes, Madam Chair, so the legal fees have been set at $25,000 annually in prior budget. However, we noted increasing fees over the previous three years. And so that has necessitated a requested budget increase to $50,000 annually to ensure that we can continue to procure necessary legal expertise and support.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And one more question, just for everybody at home. So if we do increase it to $50,000 and we don't have $50,000 in legal fees, where would the remainder of that money go? Go back into general revenue, or?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, correct. We'll continue to monitor it and adjust it each year as we come forward with the financial plan.
Any other questions from council? Counselor Day, would you like to read the first motion, please?
Certainly, Madam Chair. And I'll read it as written, and we'll make the adjustment after the fact, I think, was the, with the $5,000?
Just, the first one is to receive the report.
Okay. Oh, I see. Thanks. I move that the committee of the whole receive the service level report from the Corporate Services Department for the period 2026 to 2030.
Moved by Counselor Day, seconded by Counselor Petola. Any final questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Now, before we make the next motions, did you want to add anything about the budget? Or have you talked, said at all?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, and my apologies, I would have expanded. I thought I was going to present them separately. So the only other thing I would add is that with ongoing complexities of legal cases that the city faces, that is obviously part of why the budget has increased. And so, again, those will be monitored in an ongoing basis. And then just, other than that, I just wanted to let you know that-
And then just, other than that, I just wanted to let you know that it would be a total of $30,000 for 2026, and that would contribute to an estimated 0.08 increase for taxation for the year 2026, and then with a continued annual increase of 0.08 to 0.06 through to 2030. Thank you.
Did you want to read the next motion, Counselor Dame?
Sure. I'll move that the committee of the whole recommend council approve an increase in the draft 2026 to 2030 financial plan as follows. Increase line 21215, legal fees by 25,000 for a total of 50,000 through 2030. Should we read them together? Okay, I can do that. And increase lines 21211 and 21212, software licensing by $5,000 in 2026, and an additional 5% each subsequent year from 2027 to 2030.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Dame, seconded by Counselor Solder. Any final questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. No correspondent? Go ahead.
I apologize. And I guess that was the majority of my question. And just to, anyway, it can be confusing. But so we don't have to have the extra $5,000 in 2026. So we could have taken that out of the motion? I'm sorry, I apologize. Maybe I'm just getting that wrong.
It just means that it's already reflected in there and there'll be no additional changes. When we were in the software, it got inadvertently added earlier than council's motion. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, on to new business, City of Port Alberni Neighborhood Mitigation Strategy. We have the manager of community safety and social development providing a neighborhood mitigation strategy. So I know there is some conversation. Oh, did you want to talk? Go ahead, Counselor Petola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I would like to stay for the presentation because the material in the agenda is imminently interesting to me. But I think that I would then recuse myself after the presentation before questions or any vote because of item B in particular, but quite possibly implications on C as well.
Perfect. And just for those people that are here, there is nothing in the report from the manager of community safety about CMHA in particular. So there's no conflict for him from Counselor Petola to state. So please go ahead, Mary Claire.
Good evening, Madam Chair and council. I'm pleased to present the Neighborhood Mitigation Strategy in response to council resolution that council postponed decision on extension of the temporary use permit until administration had the opportunity to collaborate with the Salvation Army and other service providers to develop a neighborhood mitigation plan and directed administration to not take any action on the existing temporary use permit until a report on the neighborhood mitigation plan had been provided to council. This is the plan. The Neighborhood Mitigation Strategy is a proactive and collaborative framework developed to address the complex challenges emergency in Port Alberni's social hotspots. It's not intended to address all aspects of mental health and homelessness. The purpose is to provide the committee with a comprehensive mitigation strategy aimed at addressing the challenges faced by the City of Port Alberni in identified hotspots. Next slide, please. This strategy is intended to make the City of Port Alberni safer, cleaner, and inclusive, guided by trauma-informed, culturally safe, and community-driven principles. As shown on this picture in the slide, at the heart is relationship, relationship building with community partners, businesses, and residents. As such, communication is essential and will be ongoing with the development of this strategy. On the following slides, I will outline the five key components, agreements and clean teams, diversion outreach teams, crisis response teams, and security ambassadors, and explain each component briefly. There are terms referenced in this presentation continually agreements, clean teams, and the abbreviation is CT, diversion outreach team, you're going to see DOT, crisis response team CRT, and security ambassadors SA. Next slide. The first component of the strategy is to have agreements in place. The city currently has various ones in place, good neighbor agreements, memorandums of understanding, and service agreements. Agreements are voluntary. They're formal partnerships between the city, funders, provincial, and/or federal ministries, and the service providers delivering the services such as the shelter, food bank, stabilization services, et cetera. They establish expectations and accountability for communication, litter and sanitation management, and behavioral standards. Models from Calgary, Edmonton, and Yellowknife show that these agreements can reduce conflict and improve neighborhood satisfaction by up to 30% based on city evaluations cited in good neighbor agreement frameworks. This approach turns collaboration into a transparent, accountable process where everyone understands their role. The intention is to have an agreement, have the agreements on the city's websites once they are finalized and published. The second component is to have a clean team. As both an environmental and social innovation, the strategy proposed that the clean teams are delivered in partnership with the Canadian Mental Health Association as they have experience running teams since 2021. The team employs people with lived experience to clean streets, remove graffiti, and safely dispose of any sharps, garbage, and debris. Similar programs in Edmonton throughout this capital city cleanup and Regina with the White Pony Lodge have reported reduced vandalism complaints by 20 to 20%, 25%, and improved perceptions of safety. The strategy before you today proposes to fund a pilot clean team at $22,000 for the remainder of 2025 and scale up to $120,000 in 2026 through grant funding through an RFP. We have been in discussion with one provincial ministry already about funding the team for 2026 and beyond. Next slide. The third aspect is to have diversion outreach teams to provide a compassionate mobile response to individuals in visible crisis through transportation to housing, stabilization services, or health supports. In Edmonton, a comparable crisis diversion team, it was 24/7, reduced non-emergency police calls by 34% and saved 1.6 million annually in emergency response costs. For Port Alberni, this model will reduce pressure on local RCMP and British Columbia Emergency Health Services, or BCEHS, freeing emergency resources while improving outcomes for residents in distress. The proposal outlines the average annual cost of a diversion outreach team at approximately $316,000. Upon approval of this strategy, staff will pursue provincial funding opportunities through available grants. To ensure fairness, accountability, and performance evaluation, a formal request for proposal process will be initiated to pilot a DOT or a diversion outreach team in 2026. Next slide. The fourth aspect is to have a crisis response team to deliver coordinated clinical care for acute mental health and substance use crisis. This team, including mental health clinicians, social workers, and indigenous outreach liaisons, and provides real-time assessment, stabilization, and follow-up. That's the rule. Evidence from Victoria's Integrated Mobile Crisis Response Team shows a 30% decrease in ER visits or emergency room visits and a 28% reduction in police involvement in mental health crises. The proposal before you, or the strategy before you, outlines the average cost of a crisis response team at approximately $561,000. Again, if approved, staff will pursue provincial funding opportunities and post a formal request for proposal process. We understand that Port Alberni is next on the list for a pilot project with BC Housing through the Heart and Hearth pilot, which would be in assistance and part of this crisis response team. Last slide, or next slide, sorry. The Security Ambassador Program is the fifth element. This program strengthens safety through visibility and connection, not enforcement. Ambassadors are trained in trauma-informed, de-escalation, and culturally safe practices, offering reassurance, wayfinding, and early intervention. In Vancouver's Community Safety Ambassador Program, public disorder complaints dropped by 15 to 25%, while business and resident satisfaction rose significantly. For Port Alberni, this program will focus on the uptown area and other key corridors, coordinated through a community safety hub. The proposal before you outlines the average annual cost of a safety ambassador program at approximately $245,000. As the previous slides, again, it will be dependent upon grant funding that we will seek if approved, and we will publish a request for proposal to ensure fairness, accountability, and performance evaluation. In summary, the Neighborhood Mitigation Strategy is a proactive and collaborative framework developed to address the complex challenges emerging in Port Alberni's social hotspots. It aims to foster safer, cleaner, and more inclusive neighborhoods by balancing the needs of vulnerable populations with those of residents and businesses. As mentioned before, it doesn't address all aspects of mental health and homelessness. The purpose is to provide the committee today with a comprehensive mitigation strategy aimed at addressing the challenges faced by the City of Port Alberni in identified social hotspots. The financial implications for the entire strategy, and this would be for the full city, not just for the area around the Salvation Army and the Bread of Life, this would be for the full city. Financial implications for the entire strategy are estimated at an average of 1.25 million for a year-round full service. Funding will be sought from provincial and federal sources with phased implementation through a pilot project program approach. Implementing this strategy may yield fiscal savings amongst emergency services such as the RCMP, a City of Port Alberni Fire, BCEHS, and other municipal services. A conservative estimate of 28% net cost offset per year could result in a savings of approximately $348,000. Additionally, anticipated social and economic benefit include reduced property crime, improved business conditions, decrease strain on our West Coast General Hospital Emergency Room Department, and the Walk-In Clinic. Comparison with similar BC programs suggests a return on investment of $2 to $4, a benefit for every dollar spent within two to three years. This strategy reflects Port Alberni's commitment to inclusive governance, community safety, and social development. It promotes dignity, reduces conflict, and strengthens partnerships among sectors to ensure all residents feel safe and supported, and replaces reactive enforcement with proactive, evidence-based collaboration that promotes dignity, inclusion, and measurable outcomes through partnerships, communication, and compassion. This is just the beginning of the strategy. I welcome your feedback and questions.
Thank you. Counselor Petola, questions before you accuse yourself?
No, I have no questions. Thank you very much. I think this is a great, comprehensive report. Unfortunately, it does identify an organization which I sit on the board of, and thus I wish to recuse myself.
Thank you. Okay, does members of council have questions or comments for Mary Claire on her report? Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, Director. Appreciate that. Manager, manager of community safety, hold on a second. Let's get that right before. It's a big one. It's a big one I got to do. Manager of Community Safety and Social Development, sorry, Mary Claire. I apologize. So I guess the question would be to start is which groups were part of the process with this? And the reason why I ask that is there was a comment earlier on by Major Ramsey that some groups were not. And I apologize if he wasn't meaning this particular report, but I just, if I could have just an answer on who was all part of the process.
Thanks for the question. And just a response through the chair is, I believe the comment from Mr. Ramsey was from a meeting we set up after the council meeting we had, where the TUP was deferred. We set up a council meeting to talk with the Salvation Army and CMHA, as that was the bulk of the conversation was around that. We did talk about the clean teams and some of the strategies that we were thinking about. I believe in the two-week time period to turn this around, or two and a half week until the due date of the report, it was too short to try and go out and talk with every community organization out in the community. You know, the TUP does have to be dealt with in timely manner. So we wanted to get something back to council as soon as possible with some of the work that we've seen in other regions, but also some of the work that Mary Claire has been doing with lots of the groups in community on an ongoing basis. So she meets regularly with lots of different social agencies throughout the last two years, looking at strategies and looking at what people are doing. And some of the strategies that are suggested today are also around the part of, we know some of these are offered already in community and may need just to be expanded hours, et cetera. But we don't know until we put out a request for proposal or interest. I know that UBCM Council also talked with multiple ministries on some of the data that is gathered from different organizations. And we continue to work with the ministries to get that data, that is from the service providers in our community that provide them to the provincial government. So based off of some of those numbers, that's how we devised this plan in that short timeframe to make sure we had something back that council could look at it for the full community before the TUP is posted for public comment again and then comes back to council.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the answer, Mr. Fox. I do appreciate that. Well, and I guess I would just say out loud just by listening to that is if we're at a point right now where we're going to be looking at a, you know, a clean team for the community, I guess, the council's motion was just to have a neighborhood mitigation strategy, which I'm not saying we're rushing into it, but we're going to spend $22,000 for the rest of 2025 for the launch. Could that not be just done in 2026 after a proposal is done and we can find out everybody in the community who could be part of this?
Yeah. No, thank you. And through the chair, I believe we could do anything the council wishes. Our objective was based on a full year of clean team. We understood that there has been an ongoing issue, not just around the downtown area. This is for the full community. The clean team does not just operate around several buildings. It goes to problem spots along the key-to-key trail, along different parts of Third Ave. Most of the social agencies that we're talking about, these are two different issues we're talking about. You know, the social agencies do do a really good job of cleaning up around their locations. You know, the social agencies do do a really good job of cleaning up around their locations, but there are areas that are outside of their level of commitment to the city, which then falls back on the city. One of the main parts of a municipality is making sure it's clean and safe for public, and part of that is offering garbage services, putting garbage cans out for people to pick up after their dogs and, and put waste away. Well, some, some of it also is take cleanup debris that people may have thrown out of their car windows or et cetera. But again, there are areas of the town that have more debris than others, and this clean team offered a vital service until it lost funding several months ago. And, you know, since that, since C M H A lost that funding, there was a notable difference. So again, in, in our report and in our conversations, it was probably my oversight, but we recommend to go with C M H A because they already had the process in place. But moving on, if we're spending over a hundred thousand dollars, it would have to go to RFP to meet our procurement policy. So if we were to put it out for 2026, yes, we would have to go and allow everybody to, to do proper procurement on it. So that was a mistake on me reading the resolutions, but it is, it is recommended if we want to move forward first and get it set up. There's an organization that did it for many years, that already has the tools to get it up and running and have the immediate effect. So if council wanted that in our organization and in our community right away, we wanted to provide that option of something that we can do right away before a lot of the other resolutions you look at, they're for future, they're to collaborate with the stakeholders or groups that are out there doing the good work already and make sure that we move forward in the right direction. So I hope that answers your question. Again, it wasn't to put pressure on council, but I understood from that meeting that there was some need of, of some sort of response to show businesses and the community that we were, we were listening.
Before I go to Counselor Solder, I have the same thoughts as you, Counselor Mealy, that if we start a program and then if you don't get further funding, we stop it again in two months, is, I don't know, does that make sense? I don't know.
Well, through the chair again, is something better than nothing? And would C M H A even be interested in doing that for that short of time with the possibility of bidding? I don't know the answer, because we didn't ask them, can we give you some money and to offer that service for a short amount of time? All's administration again wanted to seek some information from council, and if we could set that up in a short order to do something to make a difference. Again, if council wants us to put out a full procurement, we are fine to do that, and we can do that, and we can add that into the budget. Now, we have been in conversations with the provincial government. Mary Claire, even after this report was in, met with the province, and the province may be able to provide some funding. Now, whether or not they're procuring the, the actual service or it's the city procuring, we would have to work through that. So if council wants on the second motion, you can even defer that until a later date during budget before, so I'd recommend December meeting at the latest. So if we were to put something out, we could have it up and running in January, but for the second one, you could defer that until December until we can have more conversations with the province around the type of funding. And that comes out of U B C M and discussions that we had with ministers.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I hate to be in front of Counselor Solder, I know she wants to speak, so that's okay. No, I appreciate the information, and of course, this is a, this is, I always say, it's not a cookie cutter solution to this. It's not a one-size-fits-all, so it's different for every community. So, so what I do appreciate that because I guess, you know, yeah, do we want to do something right now, or do we want to do something right? That's usually what I look at. And so, and I appreciate, absolutely, it's not just the uptown, it includes the entire community, which I see the benefit in that. But again, that's kind of like my, the mentality here, the thought process is if we're going to put it out to a request for proposal, and we have another, we have four groups that come forward, you know, we're just, we're just asking the Canadian Mental Health Association to just, if they agree, like you said, just do it for a couple of months, and then that could be it for them. So again, just want to do it right, want everybody at the table, that's all it is. Also, too, just, just really quickly, I know on the report it had examples of communities with, with clean teams, and I was just wondering if, sorry, so community examples were like Edmonton, Regina, and Winnipeg, is there any, anything through you, sorry, to staff, Mary Claire, whoever, is there any similar-sized communities that we can use as an example rather than, I mean, I respect Edmonton and Regina and Winnipeg, just much larger, and we've always, Port Alberni's always been the small-town solution, and, and we tend to get it right eventually, we really do, I think. But is there a similar-sized community that we can look at their examples and not just a, a big metropolis, I guess?
Through the chair? Yes, there are. The challenge is also getting the information, the comprehensive information online. And so, yes, there are, in short, Nanaimo has very good teams, and, and so I'd be happy to research that and provide that information.
Counselor Solder, then Counselor Dame.
Oh, thank you. Well, I took a little trip down our back alleys today, and we talk about garbage, there was bags of garbage on the ground and spread across, and it's, and you're absolutely right to our C O regarding the garbage situation, it just, the, the one I saw was bags of garbage, and there was a whole bag of dirty diapers in the back alley, and as well as, it's not just on the Third Avenue area, it's, it's across our community, and you hear about it all the time on, on social media about, look at the garbage, nobody's picking it up, nobody's doing anything. So I remember before the clean team, when, before it existed, we also had people on probation picking up garbage. I don't know if you remember, Counselor Mealy, back in the day, they were watched, but there was nobody there to, the program folded because there was no other people to manage the program. So I just want to kind of just touch that. I think the clean team is important, not just in one area, but all over our community, and how we get there will be interesting. I do think if it's, we're going over a hundred thousand dollars, it needs to go out to the public. But a question about the whole picture that you have, the whole strategy, I, I just want to ask, is there, do you see, Mary Claire, that people in the organizations that are in the community that already do little things that you have already mentioned throughout this plans, these plans could become, instead of us, are, the money would go to them, and that they would organize it and they would come up with a proper plan and it with your guidance, and, or are you looking at the city employing someone to manage it and carry on, like, you know, become a city employee? So I'm just kind of wondering where you're going to go with that? Because there's a lot of service groups that do amazing work in this community, and I really like the strategy, but I just kind of know, want to know where it's going.
Great question, and my answer will be through the chair. Yes, we see as in, after analyzing several of the programs and discussing as, as our C O mentioned, at the Continuum of Care Coalition, we talked about the, the strategy, at the Community, Community Action Team talked about the strategy, at the, at the Situation Table, we've talked about the strategy, and yes, there's lots of groups that are doing the work, and the vision is, of course, to utilize the services that are existing and perhaps expand upon them if they choose to bid on the RFP. And so everything's contingent upon, A, getting approval, B, getting funding, and then going to RFP, but certainly it's expanding on existing services, and, and perhaps in collaboration. For example, there was a comment made by one of the nonprofit organizations that perhaps they could share in the cost of the security ambassadors, because it's something that touches on all of them with their services. So looking at, this is a very high-level strategy in order to meet the, the request of council to get something back, and then there's lots of work to be done. So in short, yes, through the existing as, as much as possible.
So my other question is, like, the figures that you have come up with, like, the five hundred thousand plus and that, where did we get that? Is that the going rate? How did, how did you come up with all that?
I'll, I'll start, and I'll, I'll let the C O fill in where I didn't complete the answer. A lot of it was done on, on average costs of employees, and then using a standard template, you'll see that there was a kind of a standard approach of, you know, contingency and administration and a vehicle if the vehicle was required, and, and so they tried to be as realistic as possible to meet, meet the needs. So that was all research that was done, and, and then formulating it into a bit of a table, and then taking sort of a, a low-case scenario and a high-case scenario, and then averaging out the middle. So what you see before you is the middle of those two. So if you have a high estimate and a low estimate, it's the middle of both. So it's a little bit of guesswork, and they're estimates, for sure, and I'll let our C O fill in.
Yeah, if I, if I can just add to that, it's, if you look at the major cities that actually provide the service, they also add in some other costs, but they have much larger teams. So what we did is we scaled it down to be what the average cost would be for a city of our size with offering the services twenty-four seven. It may depend on the RFP when you put it out, different groups will charge different rates for their staff. So again, it, it could be higher or lower, and as our Director of Safety and Social Development did state is that these are estimates, there, I would say, they're Class D estimates at this point, but they were done off of, we also used A I to help us out and fact-checked. It's very interesting, if you do type in, anybody wants to use Chat G P T or the Microsoft Copilot or any of those, you can type some of the questions in about this report, and you'll get these rough numbers in there. So we not only looked at the numbers, but also used our, our new tool out there that I know council has been asking us to use. So we did, we did check that, and all of the different ones came back with that rough cost estimate.
Okay. Excuse me, thank you. It's just interesting, because I'm on this side of the table, and I'm watching eyebrows from service providers in the room go, whoa, and, and it's, their body language is giving me something else here. So I just needed to, whether you guys do that or not, I watch that. So I'm just kind of curious to know, because it is, it's a lot of money, and, and we know it, but there's a lot of issues that are in Port Alberni that, how else, what are we, where are we going to go with it? So unless we have the housing, housing to me is really important, which we all feel the same way, so anyways, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thanks, and through the chair, if, if you remember a report we brought back quite a while ago, to run the service was just over five hundred thousand. If the city was to do it itself, it was looking more at the eight to nine hundred thousand dollars. So that was in the first report we brought forward. So again, these are estimates on running the service. If there's additional setup costs, it could be more. I understand from some of the community groups, what you can find online and talking to the ministries, is that there are some services already that mirror some of these, that funding is provided by the province to groups to do, but they're for limited hours, and some of them operate Monday to Friday. There's not much going on past, I would say, eight o'clock at night, but there are some services that are included in that, and that's why we do, it is very important to talk to the funding partners at the ministries about this and see if we can work collaboratively on a Port Alberni solution.
I would agree that we need to work collaboratively. I don't know if we want to do it, because I don't think we have the resources or the knowledge as the, as the people that work in that, in that area. So I would like to work collaboratively and with, under Mary Claire there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dame.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, well, first off, thank you to the manager of Community Safety and Social Development for the, the strategy. Yeah, that was a flex. No, I'm reading it from the agenda. So I think, I think that I would, I would just like to say that I, I agree with Counselor Mealy that it is better to do something right than it is to do something quickly. Now, there are certain situations where, you know, you don't have the luxury of time, and the weather's getting colder, and we will have a decision based on that, sort of pressed on us sooner. But as far as the clean team goes, I do feel like that's one that we could probably put off until December, as was mentioned, rather than trying to see if we can squeeze in a couple of months, I agree with that. And, and I think it's worth noting and just acknowledging that the, C M H A has done an excellent job in the past, at least, you know, as far as I know. It's one of those things where you certainly notice the garbage around when the clean team isn't active, but when they were active, they maybe, you know, went fairly unnoticed, just because, you know, if, if it's, if the streets are clean, nobody's going to say much, right? So that's, it's easier to complain than it is to, to notice the positives. So I, I think that, yeah, I wouldn't want to see us jumping into a twenty-two thousand dollar commitment for the last couple of months without knowing what our long-term commitment is. So I think that I'd like to see us postpone that, and I, in the meantime, direct administration to pursue grant funding, because the decision's a whole lot easier if we're not having to pay for it ourselves, right? So if we, yeah, maybe we could make a motion, or I could make a motion, I just need to think on the wording of that one for a moment, to amend that slightly, the recommended. And other than that, I think that, that the recommended motions D and E makes sense. So if, if it's all right, I'll just start making motions. So I move that Committee of the Whole recommend counsel endorse the Neighborhood Mitigation Strategy dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Moved by Counselor Dame, seconded by Counselor Solder. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed, motion carried.
So now I'm going to skip B, and anybody can jump in if they want to. I move that the Committee of the Whole recommend that council postpone the decision of allocating a hundred and twenty thousand dollars within the draft twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty thirty financial plan to fund the clean team program and, until December, and in the meantime, direct administration to pursue grant funding for the same.
Moved by Counselor Dame, seconded by Counselor Solder. Any final questions or comments? All in favor? Or Counselor Mealy?
I apologize, Madam Chair, I do. So just, so what we're doing is, we're going to postpone the hundred and twenty thousand dollars for line two-two-one-three-zero. So I would assume, and just through you to staff, so that means we're not going to go, we're not going to have a request for proposal set up or anything, but we will bring this back in December as the Counselor Dame has suggested.
Yeah, through the chair, we will continue to work with the province and bring back a, a report on this to council about, or, or to Committee of the Whole, depending on what we, we find out, and report back on it in December, and then receive direction at that point. We will not move forward with any RFP on this, but we'll continue to work with the province.
Counselor Dame.
Thanks, and yeah, just before we vote, I, I did want to acknowledge that while I, I wanted to note that good work had been done by C M H A in the past, I'm not necessarily, to me, as long as we get a good result, that's what matters, and I think following process is the important thing here, so.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion to defer till December? Any opposed, motion carried. Please go ahead.
I move that the Committee of the Whole recommend council direct administration to continue working with the province to participate in the Provincial Encantment and Homelessness Response Heart and Hearth Pilot Program.
Moved by Counselor Dame, seconded by Counselor Mealy. Any final questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed, motion carried. Please go ahead.
And I move that the Committee of the Whole recommend council direct administration to seek funding opportunities for the initiatives outlined within the Neighborhood Mitigation Strategy in collaboration with existing social service agencies that offer similar services.
Moved by Counselor Dame, seconded by Counselor Solder. Any final questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed, motion carried. About point B, are we, did you want to defer that, or?
I'm just going to leave it out entirely. I'm just going to leave it out entirely and it just, to me, says that we're not, we're not going to allocate any funding for the remainder of this year is what I'm seeing.
Is everyone okay with that? Do we need a motion for that, Sarah? Okay. Mary Claire, before you go, I did have a question, but Counselor Dame was so quick, I didn't have a chance to ask. I had a lot of other questions, but they're all answered. You talked about the hotspots in Port Alberni. What areas do you consider to be the hotspots?
There's several of them. I'll start and, and then let the C O fill in. Certainly in the Uptown area, around the Bread of Life and, and run by the Salvation Army. Lower Third Area, Redford Areas, there's a number of them around Redford as well. The area over by the two shelters on Eighth Avenue and that whole area, those are the four key ones that we certainly receive a lot of complaints through the Bi-Lot Department about. And I'll let our C O fill in. Any others?
Yeah, thanks. And through the chair, I believe the manager got most of the sites. Some of the other ones we hear from other departments are along some of our trails through the Key to Key and behind the Barclay and in the Roger Creek Ravine, Dry Creek Ravine area. So those are the, the main areas that we are called to a lot and need to keep on servicing, so.
Thank you very much. Could someone, by Counselor Petola, back into the room? Good report, by the way, Mary Claire, thanks so much.
Next, we have a report from the Deputy Fire Chief seeking increases in the Fire Department's operational budget. Please go ahead, Travis.
Okay, Madam Chair and Council. So before you have three recommendations to increase the operational budget for the 2026 to 2030. The first one being to increase communication system, which would allow us to purchase subscriptions for eight mobile units first with Starlink subscriptions. In January of 2025 this year, we were approved to apply for Emergency Operations Standard Grant through and in partnership with the A C R D, which we were successful in doing, which allowed us to purchase the hardware or have the funding to purchase the hardware for, for this, give us the Starlink capability. And so we just need to increase the budget to be able to purchase the, the subscriptions for eight units to be placed on each of our apparatus. The second one is to increase the fire building maintenance line to allow for controlling the heat in our apparatus bays by replacing the skylights with ones that can open and close so that we can allow the hot air and that to, to leave the apparatus bays in which we do truck checks multiple times a day. We conduct our training in there as well as routine maintenance. We did a trial this year by removing one of the skylights and it made a significant difference in the summer months to alleviate the, the heat and subsequent heat stress that our, our members experience when they're working in that area. And then the third recommendation is to increase the emergency, emergency program, tsunami warning line item by $8,000. We've been experiencing some failures with our components, with our tsunami warning systems, mainly the amps. Each tower has nine amps in them. And, and then also we see a need to start replacing the D C batteries as well. So this will allow us to ensure that we have preventive maintenance to ensure that the tsunami warning towers are operational. So those are the three recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dame.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to make a couple of comments. I think that items A and C are like clear needs and B as a, it sounds like a necessary thing as well, but I do wonder about the timing, if we're going to have a facility assessment report coming in 2026, I believe, if, if we would want to wait and see if, how that fit in with, with what we hear. Maybe staff could elaborate on the, the timing of that report.
C O, did you want to comment or?
Sure, I, I can start and maybe the deputy can fill in. So we do have a facility assessment on the full fire department coming up. I believe the fire chief and the D C noticed that when doing repairs on the skylight, when it was removed, they noticed quite a difference in the ambient temperature in the bay, feeling that this would, would help right away immediately for next summer before the needs assessment. Again, we'll follow any direction the council would like, but the D C and the fire chief felt that this had to come forward immediately to make sure that the members are, feel the comfort in the station as much as possible, especially to meet those regulations on the hot days in the middle of the summer. I don't, I'm not sure if the D C has anything else to add to that.
Did you have something to add?
Just to give some idea of what the facilities assessment would have covered is more to do with the use of the areas. And yeah, that's about it, so.
Please go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I, the question was just because I'm wondering if, if, you know, other upgrades are found to be necessary, if it makes more sense to do this all at once, just from a practicality perspective and, and which usually ends up being a financial perspective as well. But yeah, thanks.
Counselor Solder.
Thanks for the presentation, but my question will be, well, I definitely agree with the A and the C. The B, I understand that. Let's, I'll just start with A. I know when the Starlink and the, and the Regional District, as I was there and I really wanted the Starlink to be, the Port Alberni Fire Department to be in, have Starlink. And I think it's because, and I believe it's because you go to a lot of spots that you, like the Banfield area, you can't communicate, you're on the cell phone trying to communicate with emergencies here in Port Alberni as well as going out into the hump and that. So anybody not understanding Starlink, let's, let's put it this way, you have a cell phone and you want to make a call and you can't make that call because you're not near an internet. It's exactly the fire department and I don't think any emergency vehicle should be without communication to the community for backup or whatever. And, and there's those moments, even your, your cell phones don't communicate. Is that correct? Am I in the right mode here?
Yes, you're correct that that would assist in maintaining connectivity when we're responding out of, out of our region for regional rescues, wildfires, that sort of thing, to ensure that we have good situational awareness with our crews, that we have the communication back and forth with fire dispatch so we know where they're at, what they're doing, what their needs are, that they're safe, that sort of thing. It would also allow for connectivity in times when our current, when there's a network congestion with our current provider or if there was a, a big event where there was infrastructure damage and, or there was server overload. So in those cases, and if we were operating in the city, it would ensure that we would have connectivity here as well.
I totally agree. The other one is regarding the tsunami warning system. Can you not piggyback with the emergency program on grants with the Regional District on upgrading? I know the government gives out a lot of grants when it comes to tsunami upgrades and stuff, so just kind of curious.
Yes, we were, thanks for the question through the chair. So we applied for some grant funding to replace the wooden poles and some other parts of the tsunami warning system through the Fire Smart Grant. We haven't been successful with that at this point.
Okay, well, hopefully there'll be something in the near future and you're going to continue applying for grants with the tsunami system.
Absolutely.
Okay, and the last thing is regarding the venting, a kind of, if you're wearing full gear and you're inside and it's really hot, I can imagine what it's like. Not that you're not doing that when there's a fire too, you're in full gear and you can't, but I understand that part of it. Thank you.
Before I go to Counselor Mealy, I'm going to interrupt with an exciting announcement. Springer's three-run blast leads Blue Jays to Rolf series in dramatic game seven victory. And if you want to clap, please go ahead. Counselor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll put on my, my special old rude helmet here for this one. So first of all, thank you very much, Deputy Cross, for coming tonight and for the presentation. And I'm glad that Counselor Solder did bring up the Regional District because I was at those meetings, we were talking about Starlink and, and what it is, is the unnerving situation of having a crew of four go to a motor vehicle incident down the Banfield Highway and they get out of range and now we don't know where they are, how they are doing. And so the Starlink was, and it was brought up at the Regional District. So I'm just wondering, because it was talked at Regional District and maybe, maybe Counselor Hagard or, or somebody could else, I thought we were going to go in it together. I thought that the Regional District was going to do it and the city was going to be part of that and that it was going to be spread, these Starlink apparatuses would be spread out. So is that still a plan or are we going to have them piggyback off of us? We're just being independent from the other fire departments, so thank you, sorry.
I'll try and answer. The funding that we got, we got funding from the A C R D through a grant for capital purchases. This is for the actual operational cost. Am I correct? Okay, okay. And any other questions or comments? Counselor Petola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Assistant Deputy Chief. I'm looking at the report on page two of four or page 82 in the agenda, right below the operational cost summary supporting data. And I read the paragraph that said, "These figures underscore the financial implications of out-of-bound emergency responses. Notably, the cost recovery for both wildfire and road rescue incidents exceeds the associated overtime costs, demonstrating a positive financial return on these deployments." That last sentence seems to me to be illogically connected. Are, is, does your report suggest that overtime costs are the only costs of deployments as set out or are there other costs associated with those deployments?
Thank you for the question through the chair. The, the following paragraph after that mentions that this, these figures don't account for fuel expenses or vehicle wear and tear, as we don't have accurate data at this time to put a cost on, on that.
So then it's not to create, correct to say that this demonstrates there's a positive financial return on deployments if you don't know all of the costing? Is that correct?
Yeah, at this time, we can't provide that full cost and we recognize that there is full wear and tear or there is a, a cost to the wear and tear of the apparatus and for the fuel. But with the figures that we have available, we're not able to provide that.
I just, so I mean, this, this isn't really about the, the proposed motion whatsoever, but I am interested in ensuring that we fully understand the numbers when we're providing a service that is outside of our area, outside of our taxpayer funded area especially. Is it, is, are there plans for getting those full costing of the service so that we know whether or not we're operating at a, a positive or a negative and whether or not the taxpayers of Port Alberni are supporting road rescue in Banfield or Cathedral Grove?
Yeah, absolutely. Some of the challenges is due to the information that we collect or, or don't collect and attaching a cost to that. So the, the time and hours that we are responding, the mileage that we, we travel as well and, and then attaching a cost to that and having those, those facts, figures available. So that is definitely something that we're working on so that we will have that in the future. At this time, we, we just don't have that available.
Thank you very much, Deputy Chief. And just, I'm going to take this off, I'm going to say that I was also at the A C R D meetings and we were very vocal at that point in time to have the A C R D pay for the actual units because of the fact that these rescues are occurring in, outside of city limits within the A C R D. And if we weren't going, then there would be other fire departments that would have to go. And I'm quite happy that we do provide the service with the professionalism that we do and it's absolutely imperative that crews are able to stay in communication. So I fully support it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Mealy, would you mind reading the motions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry, that's a really bright helmet, I apologize. It's Grandma Mealy's, actually, that's why. I move that the Committee of the Whole recommend council approve the annual addition with inflation for the acquisition of Starlink subscriptions for the eight mobile units within the draft 2026-2030 financial plan as follows. Increase line 22431, communication system, $8,000. Would you like me to do all three at the same time or separately? Yes, yes. Thank you, Ms.
Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Solder. Any final questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed, motion carried. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Committee of the Whole recommend council allocate funding in 2026 of the draft 2026-2030 financial plan for roof venting and skylight improvements to reduce heat stress in apparatus bays as follows. Increase line 22471, fire building maintenance, $11,600.
Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Solder. Any final questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carried. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Committee of the Whole recommend council approve the annual addition with inflation for repairs and maintenance of the tsunami warning system infrastructure, which in, within the draft 2026-2030 financial plan as follows. Increase line 22510, emergency program tsunami warning, $8,000.
Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Solder. Any final questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a report from the Manager of Culture regarding approval of annual special event funding. Please go ahead, Sheila. Nice to see you here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I have for you is a list of events that would become what we would do in 2026. The first being you're aware of is the 40th anniversary of the Abashiri Port Alberni Twinning Celebration, which will happen in February. I've been working with the Twinning Association to come up with a slate of things and I will, we're bringing more information to you so you can give feedback on what we actually have planned. But we believe that we could do a very lovely job with a, a budget at about $3,000. And given that it is the 40th anniversary, it is, it's right that we make a little bit of an effort. Building on the success of Canada Day last year and actually having a better handle of what the actual expenses were, $5,000 should allow us to continue this event and to increase it somewhat and also provide the ability to leverage a little bit more. And working with other groups in the community, hopefully grow the event even greater than it was last year. Light Up is our community tree celebration and we've now invested in that beautiful tree down at Harbor Key and working with the Community Arts Council and our other cultural partners in late November to spark up the tree and celebrate. And city involvement in that event is minimal, but it will cost about $1,000. Placemaking, these are something I would like to pilot. They're small community activations. These would allow us to not only incubate certain types of events, but also test certain areas in our community. also test certain areas in our community for placemaking. So through the summer, we would identify places where we would like to see if that is a great location to get people to try to gather. And we would have everything from music, perhaps dance, a bit of children's theater types of activities. It would be a broad spectrum. Basically, the, the program would be geared towards families and would be smaller and more pointed in different parts of our community, whether it be a park, whether it be somewhere on the key, whether it be somewhere not in the center. Just trying to target places that we want to see if these are the key placemaking places in our community. The fifth one is a public art mapping project. And you're probably wondering, what do I mean by that? There is considerable public art in Port Alberni, but we do not have a comprehensive list of it currently, nor do we have, have we had eyes on it for quite a while. So we do not know the condition of a lot of the public art that is out there. So this project would do three things. It would identify what is here, where it is, what condition it's in. And then also what we would do in this mapping project is to identify places where we think would be great places to invest in public art in the future and to earmark those accordingly. And at the end of this, you would be able to understand that maybe some of the public art where we have it, maybe that's not where we need it. But we need to know where it is and what condition it is so that we can identify, can we move someone around? Is it in the wrong location? Or what do we do? And then the final thing is something that I've started. I've written a few grants with the, at BC Hydro and its beautification of Harbor Key. You've probably noticed some of the electrical boxes down there are looking in pretty rough nick. And so I think it's a great opportunity for us to not, to spruce up Harbor Key, but also to bring something that's bespoke to Port Alberni by local artists. That it will also be part of the identity and placemaking and also make those eyesores a little bit better eye-friendly. So those are my asks and I welcome your questions.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to say that last year when you did your Canada Day celebrations, I believe that was the first time the city kind of took it over. And for extremely limited budget, it was fantastic. So imagine what it can do with $5,000. And I love the idea of the small pop-up events. I think that's such a brilliant idea. Anyway, those are my comments. Anyone else? Counselor Solder?
So I'm just kind of curious to know regarding the community investment funds. So this is, nothing is going to come out of the community investment for organizations and that. And also when you talk about just regarding the, oh, the public art mapping project, is that a ongoing project or is that the one-time shot? Because I'm just kind of curious to know with that, because we see we have a budget increase every year. So I'm just kind of curious to know that.
Thank you. Through the chair. In terms of the, the mapping project, this first year is to get a handle on what we actually have and then what we do with it. That information becomes what we do in next, in subsequent years. For example, maybe we make a map online so people can go around and actually see it. Maybe we take one of our pop-up events and we start highlighting different public art around, around the city. This year it's to get started. I won't be able to fully answer that question until I actually see how much we have, what we can do with it, and are we going to try to move some of it? And I'm sorry, what was the other question?
The one wasn't a question, oh, regarding the community investment.
Oh, yes.
Sorry, I was just going to chime in on the first question. So through, through the chair, it is an ongoing project on all these items, but as they change and flow, we would explain to council what, what is happening, what are the events happening? Again, as you can see on, I believe it's, it's page eighty-nine, it goes that it is in every year of the budget from 2026 through 202030, four different cultural type events or placemaking.
In terms of, in terms of CIP, these are, these are primarily activities that are being generated out of the Department of Culture and are coming out of an event budget versus a CIP budget, which is, in my understanding, is where we target monies for external groups to do certain things. And part of where we struggled this year is Canada Day did get put into the CIP budget because we didn't have an event budget set up. So one is more tracking in-kind expenditures and investment in community groups. And events would be the things that we take on ourselves.
Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. Through you to the Manager of Culture. Thank you, Ms. Perry, for being here and such a nice report again. Just like to say that all the staff reports have been wonderful tonight and it really shows, not just to council to the public, that the amount of work that's being done. So just, just want to touch on a couple of things. So the Abashiri Port Alberni twinning celebration, very important for this community, very important for me. So even $3,000, if, if work can get done in $3,000, I'm, I'm fine with that. If they need a little bit more, I'm also fine with that. Don't want to say it out loud, but just want to make sure it's done right culturally. The, the Abashiri Port Alberni twinning celebration is very important culturally in this community. Canada Day celebrations, again, I've talked about how that was put on this year. Really appreciate all the work you did, Ms. Perry. And it was amazing for the lack of funding, I guess we could put it that way. I still see people taking pictures at the Celebrate Port Alberni Moose and Beaver. So I mean, I think, I think that's amazing that people are still going down there. And it says Celebrate Port Alberni. So when they take pictures, they're putting it all over the world that they've come to Port Alberni. So I really appreciate the small things like that. And I, I totally look forward to Canada Day next year. And I'd love to help out again if, if that's possible in any of these events because I think it's also the community coming forward too. I guess Canada Day is one of those things. If there is a business, I guess question is through to you, to staff, is there's a business that would like to donate time, money, goods to the Canada Day celebrations? Because that's what it used to be. The whole community used to come together and, and bring, bring together. So if there is a group, what would they do? And I mean, I guess the, another question, would they, would they get a tax receipt? I'm not sure. It's not really like a donation to a nonprofit, but I'm just trying to make it easy for groups who do want to come back forward and say, I want to be part of the Canada Day celebrations again.
Through the chair, thank you very much for the question. We'll take money in any way, shape, or form. And if you have someone you want to give it, just call me. Yes, I've already been working, trying to identify some corporate sponsorship in the community. It hasn't, I don't have it in, confirmed as of yet, but we're also working to expand just the sheer number of groups that we work with. And also, just so you know, the selfie stations will be getting a, how should we say, they will be getting a winter spruce up and they will be, it will be moved and it will become our Christmas selfie station down at Harbor Key. So you have that to look forward to.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Solder, would you like to read the motion?
Yes, Madam, Madam Mayor, I move that the committee of the whole recommend council amend the draft 2026-2030 financial plan to reflect the following. One, increase line two, seven, one, nine, zero, special events expenses, $15,000.
Moved by Counselor Solder, second by Counselor Mealy. Any final questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next is a report for the manager operations seeking changes to transit infrastructure. I don't think he's seen you in here for a while. He must have been hiding somewhere. You're busy working.
I let, I let Jim McDonald do all the tough stuff.
Let's go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chair and committee members. I am here to present the Transit Bus Shelter and Bench Enhancements Report. The purpose of this report is to seek approval for changes to the transit infrastructure throughout the community and standardize the design, location, and installation of all transit benches and shelters within the city. A bit of background on this is in July of 2024, the committee reviewed the Public Bench Standards Report to establish consistent standards for public transit benches in the city. Intermeasures, measures have been taken and this report presents a comprehensive recommendation for consideration. Following collaboration with BC Transit on grant funding and a review of local transit service routes, staff identified opportunities to enhance rider experience through improved infrastructure. Many former advertisement benches had been removed, reducing available seating at particular bus stops. A citywide review of the transit benches and shelter locations has now been completed. This report outlines the recommendations, available grant opportunities and alternatives, and budget implications. The recommendations for this report, number one, that the committee of the whole recommend council amend City of Port Alberni 2025 to 2029 financial plan bylaw number five, one, two, three, 2025 as follows. Add transit infrastructure upgrades in 2025 capital plan for $75,000. Increase the contribution from the BC Transit local-only transit fund for an additional $75,000. And recommendation number two is that the committee of the whole recommend to council that the mayor and corporate officer be authorized to execute the BC Transit Bus Shelter Program Agreement for the improvement, improvements to eighteen BC Transit bus stop locations within Port Alberni.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Counselor Solder?
Just a quick question. So each of the stops will be accessible, have accessibility for people? And the covers too, will, wheelchairs if people or a scooter could fit in underneath them?
That's correct. So the, the shelters that have been chosen have benches inside the shelters, but there's also space for a wheelchair or scooter to fit in there as well. In terms of accessibility, there's a couple of shelters that are going to need some extra construction work done by city forces and able to have letdowns for that accessibility. And the majority of these are just additional benches for those.
And just to follow up, regarding lighting, some of those shelters can be really dark. And I know some, there was some talk about, or I read something about solar, but not all. So how is that going to work?
So going through 150 bus stop locations, the eighteen that were chosen were based on ridership numbers. So I can sometimes ask for the stars and hope to get the moon. So some of these shelters, I was able to get some solar, solar-powered lighting put in. And some of them were not approved for that. So it does really come down to what the program is allowing and how much funding is available for each community. That doesn't mean that we can't add some in the future, though.
Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much, Mr. Director of Operations, Manager of Operations. Sorry, I apologize. Got to get that right. It's a little late now. So just, just to confirm that the $75,000 we're putting in the budget, but it is not coming out of taxation, it's coming out of the, the existing funds that we have, correct? Just want to make sure for everybody on YouTube as well.
Yeah, absolutely. That's correct. There is an existing fund amount that we basically asked BC Transit to release, but I believe as in the report there, it shows that there's roughly $347,000 in that funding. So this is taking a portion of that to improve some of those, some of the stops, yeah.
Counselor Solder?
I just want to say I'm really happy that there's some new benches going out and some shelters going out. It's really needed in the community, especially with our liquid sunshine that's happening all year round. And when is the project going to start? And when will it be completed? I like it yesterday, just so you know that.
I would have liked it yesterday as well. So as soon as the, if council chooses to approve this, basically city forces will start working on the basics, the groundwork, and then we'll be contacting BC Transit with the agreement. And they'll, they'll hand out the schedule because of course they have a contractor who's also busy in other communities doing that work as well. And, and we'll go from there. But it is a 25, 26 fiscal year project. So I'm thinking whatever doesn't get done in 2025 will get done in 2026, most likely when the weather works for it. Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Petola, you would like to read the motions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the committee of the whole recommend council amend City of Port Alberni 2025-2029 financial plan bylaw number five, one, two, three, 2025 as follows. I, add transit infrastructure upgrades, 2025 capital plan, $75,000. II, increase contribution from BC Transit, local-only transit fund, $75,000.
Moved by Counselor Petola, second by Counselor Solder. Any final questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Please go ahead.
Madam Chair, I move that the committee of the whole recommend to council that the mayor and corporate officer be authorized to execute the BC Transit Bus Shelter Program Agreement for the improvements to eighteen BC Transit bus stops, locations in Port Alberni.
Moved by Counselor Petola, second by Counselor Solder. Any final questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next is a report from the Director of Development Services Deputy CAO regarding corrections required on the city website property information portal. Please go ahead, Scott.
Thank you to the committee of the whole. So the city has become aware that there's unfortunately some inaccurate building permit information on the city's Port Alberni's website under our property information portal. At the time of inputting the status of the building permits into our system, there was very few category options in our system. And there was several hundred open building permit files where no final permit had been issued or final inspections completed. And those permit, permit files were imported as being complete in our system. This is, is the, the building permit status of complete is inaccurate for these files as the open permits never receive final inspections and therefore that is being provided inaccurate information. In order to correct this status of the information, we will need to do somewhat of a software change in our Tempest system. And then staff will need to go through each file and input the corrected information into our system. Unfortunately, there's no automated way to do this in that essentially a staff person is going to have to go through our hard copy files and correct this information and input the status. There's no budget for this extra work. So we're estimating the staffing needs to, to do this correction work is in there, is $50,000. And then we've estimated about $3,000 for the Tempest software fix that will need to be done. The available building permit information on our website through our portal information system is available to the public and it's pretty widely used by realtors and financial institutions, certainly during the sale, sale transactions. This would be a one-time cost occurrence and I'd be pleased to try and answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Questions from council? Counselor Solder?
So Scott, this is just a one-year term, is it? Or how, what's the term on this? Or until the project's completed?
Until the project's completed. We, it wouldn't take us a year, but it would take several months to undertake this, this work.
I have no doubt on that. It's a very tedious, onerous job. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone like to read the motion? Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the committee of the whole recommend council amend the draft 2026-2030 financial plan to increase line two, six, one, two, nine, planning administration by $53,000 to correct the building permit information on the property information portal.
Moved by Counselor Mealy, second by Counselor Solder. Please go ahead.
Scott, just my, one final question, though. How long has this been incorrect on, online? Has it been a long time? Like it's not happened yesterday? It's...
Well, we're not 100% sure, but it has been several years, actually.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Scott. Next is a report from the Director of Finance regarding the Audit Committee. Andrea, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, the report is covering the Audit Committee and the Terms of Reference. So we had an Audit Committee meeting in, earlier this year where we reviewed the Terms of Reference and there was discussion around how can we do things more efficiently and still provide the information that is required to have that oversight and financial governance of the city. With that, With that, we looked at some communities on the island and some of the practices that they undertake, and we looked at Campbell River and Nanaimo for two examples, where they use the Committee of the Whole to provide all the information to the committee to review, and then that is part of a regular Committee of the Whole day. One, that allows for more efficient processing of information to council. Two, it does provide the information to all of council as far as financial governance. Having the efficiency of having it all in the same meeting at the Committee of the Whole, rather than have a separate meeting, also reduces the time that some of the committee members on the council commit to this separate committee and staff time. So that happens four times a year. As mentioned, it is to allow for a streamlined process, to allow for more efficient and more transparency. So the Audit Committee is not a recorded meeting, whereas the Committee of the Whole does have recording and playback for that governance, that oversight. So there are some benefits, and I know there was some discussion back and forth by members of the public about losing the opportunity, but the intent is for the same material brought forward in the same format, but also have that to the committee at a regular Committee of the Whole meeting. So with that, the recommendation is to rescind the Audit Committee and transition to financial oversight through the council, through the regular reporting of the Committee of the Whole effective January of 2026. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Andrew. We do have members from council, the Audit Committee, so I'd be interested in what your thoughts are on this. Counselor Petola?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess this is not a question through you, but just a reply or a comment. I fully support this report. There are significant advantages to having the financial oversight done by the entire council, whether it be through Committee of the Whole or through council meeting, and some of the, well, the director has already said what those are, I don't need to repeat them all. But particularly, I think that it's important that the proceedings, when it concerns financial oversight, be as public as possible so that they are on YouTube and available to the entire community with a greater ease than the Audit Committee meetings at 9:30 in the morning are.
Thank you. Did you have some thoughts, Counselor Sola?
I did. So I've been on that forever, it feels like. I think everybody's absolutely right, you know, like, it should come back to council. We never bring a report back to council, we never needed to bring a report back to council. And by the time, you know, if you're a first-year counselor and you're on the Audit Committee, yes, there probably is a lot of questions, but if you've been there for a long time, you should know how the whole system works. And so, is there a lot of questions? No. So we have four staff members, three to four staff members that come to the audit, and we're there till the morning, till lunchtime, pretty well, and that's a waste of staff to valuable time, because there's lots of other issues that's more important at that particular time. The, long as the public, if we're moving forward with this, long as the public still are able to ask questions, do they submit it in writing? I mean, we need to look at a bigger picture. Are they able to make comment when afterwards and ask their questions? The format of how we are going to handle it in council is going to be really important, because we want to be very transparent. And also, will the questions asked, will they be put online under, you know, the Audit Report or some other area? And I'm sure they are, I'm not sure, I have never dabbled on to our website. So I think that's really important. And I believe, you know, the rest of council really needs to see what's going on, and there's checks and balances, you know? I don't see anything, any errors or anything like that, very rare. Actually, Andrew brings them up before we even ask the questions, a lot of times, oh, there's a typo or something like that. So it's been, it's brought up to us. So I, you know, it's, the members, I mean, we sit there and we ask the questions, but we also know the answers at the times. So I think, yeah, but I just want to make sure, I know we have to have an Audit Committee, or we don't, because at one time I was told it was. Okay, I'm happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mealy, and then Counselor Dame.
Thank you, Madam Chair, appreciate that. So yeah, and I'll admit, knowing the Audit Committee's been part of municipal government in the city of Port Alberni for eons, I had some reservations about getting rid of that check and balance, like you said, but knowing full well, it's going to come to a Committee of the Whole where the public can be part of it as well, and the entire council, I appreciate the opportunity to have the information out in public and be more transparent and have the ability to ask questions, and that's great. So I guess my only question, and may not be at this point, but, so when that comes to council or Committee of the Meeting, is it going to be its own separate line item like delegations, new business, staff reports? Is it going to come in as audit by itself? Because, or is it going to be kind of not hidden in the agenda, but somewhere else?
See you.
Yeah, thanks for the question, I'll start, and then maybe the Director of Finance wants to add something, but it would just be an audit report, so it would come to the Committee of the Whole, it would be publicized like any of our other financial items that come to council. You know, the public has public input and question period at the end, just like on every other report that comes, and it adds that further level of transparency. Currently, since I've been here, I don't think the Audit Committee has made one recommendation to council. I continue to ask myself, through a lot of courses I've taken over the years, it's, do you have a committee just for having a committee? Or what is the work of that committee? And I think that's a question that council should always be asking about the time that they're spending on something, or they're asking staff to spend on.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate the answer through to Mr. Fox. So just, yeah, I think that committee had its heyday in the 80s and the 90s, and it's just kind of continued on. However, I just want to say to every single member of the Audit Committee from the 80s and 90s, even before that, to today, thank you very much for at least going in and still asking those questions. That's a big part of it still, to ensure, even though you probably may know the answers already, you know, the process works, but those are questions that still need to be asked, so look forward to seeing it in public.
Thank you. Counselor Dame?
Thank you. Yeah, I think the fear is naturally going to be, is this a reduction of transparency? And quite the contrary, I think the fact that it is televised, that it is welcome and advertised to the public on a broader scale, and I think that any time that we have an opportunity to increase both efficiency and transparency, that's sort of a no-brainer, right? So I definitely support this, and I hope that, you know, the community sees that this is still going to be coming forward to the Committee of the Whole where they can attend and continue to ask their questions just before all of council, rather than just three of us, so, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Sola?
And just one further thing, like, when Counselor Mealy alluded back to the past, we're looking at, we didn't have social media, we didn't have computers, we were actually all paper at one point, you know, like stacks of paper, so, and we also didn't have it livestreamed. So I think what was great in those days, yes, I believe the Audit Committee was really important, because there was no other communication other than what was reported on the radio or in the AV Times, that's what we had. And now we are livestreamed, we have computers, and people can get the information or ask the information. So the world has changed, and we are moving forward, and I think the Audit Committee needs to do similar.
Thank you, Counselor Petola?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make the motion that the Committee of the Whole recommend that council rescind the Audit Committee and transition financial oversight duties to the broader council through regular reporting at Committee of the Whole meetings to take effect in January 2026.
Moved by Counselor Petola, second by Counselor Mealy. Any, Counselor Sola?
And just so the public members realize, we are 100% transparent. You want to ask us the questions, ask the questions, it's out there, we're not trying to kill committee, we, as Counselor Dame has said, we're not trying to hide anything, we just want it to be where you can hear it on, through YouTube and watch it livestream or through the computers, or however you want to, you know, through social media and all that. So it's just moving into this century, and my favorite thing is, times have changed, so let's move and update ourselves.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion? Any opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. Question period. This is an opportunity for public to ask questions of the committee. For those participating electronically, please use the raise your hand feature, and you will be called upon to speak in the order of which it appears. Would any of the public like to come up? Please come up, Keith.
That one's working now, thank you. So I have a question for the C.A.O. I'm not sure you're prepared to answer this. I mentioned this at the last City Council meeting. Can you answer for the general public in Port Alberni, how many actual taxpayers are in this city? If you're not prepared to answer that, I'll ask it at the next council meeting.
Through the chair, that is a good question. I don't have the exact number, but I can get it for you.
Would you please do that, sir? There seems to be a lot of, I think, misunderstanding in the community, and once we know that answer, I know the answer, but once the rest of the community knows the answer, I think it might affect some people, because we're a small community, we're suffering big city problems that were in, some of our community invited upon ourselves, and it's going to get really expensive. For, I'm a pensioner, there's no way I can live in this city. I just do the math, there's no way. I have to, I'm in the process of moving, I'm not the only one, I've talked a lot. Okay, next question. I heard some comments here, I'm a little concerned, and hey, about this clean, the clean team, rather, it was operational, it was great. The Mental Health Association is a wonderful neighbor, I didn't suspect that at first, they're a wonderful neighbor, and it needs to be expanded, in my view, and they were handling it very well, and Salvation Army shouldn't be included in that. They signed on. Are any of you aware of the Good Neighborhood Agreement? Are any of you aware that the Salvation Army should have that block that I live on, the cleanest in Port Alberni, according to their agreement? Are any of you aware of this? It shouldn't cost the city a nickel. It's, they signed on to it.
If you remember, we deferred that motion until we see if you can get grant funding, so it's not coming from taxpayer dollars.
Okay, but they were mentioned as one of the recipients down the road, maybe we should look at all these service groups, right? Well, the Mental Health Association has had this covered very well, and it got canceled, the funding got canceled. Oh, and by the way, the people who were doing the cleaning were street people, okay? So it was a good thing, it was a good improvement for them, and they were, they weren't the worst off people, they were more the, you know, not affected by the hard drugs, I'll say that, they were functioning. And I like, I just like to see it carried on at some point in time, it was a good idea. But are you aware, I'd like an answer out of you counselors, that the Salvation Army has signed on, mine should be the cleanest block in Port Alberni, and an example to show the world? And it shouldn't be me doing all the cleaning and my neighbors. Is, I'm going to wait for my answer. Are any of you counselors aware of that? That's just a nod? How about you ladies? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, I got bad, some trouble with my hearing, obviously. Madam Chair, are you aware of that? Okay, so, so once, with that understanding, I'm not even worried anymore, my neighborhood will be the cleanest one in the town in no time flat. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up for a question?
You want a question? That wasn't my question. She was asking if anybody else had a question.
Oh, sorry.
I told you my hearing was terrible.
Okay, seeing no other questions, could I get a motion adjourned, please? Moved by Counselor Mealy, second by Counselor Dame, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carried. And thanks, everyone, for being patient with me, I don't very often get to chair a council meeting. Thank you, everyone.